Okay, we're gonna call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 6th at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Stark?
Here.
Shanzet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Saladi?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a form. Next item is item two, which is items removed, added, or changed, I know of none. Okay. Item three is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Understand we might have someone here from environmental. I'm sorry, the chair and not someone.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Burnham, and I am the Chair of the Batavia Environmental Commission. And I just wanted to come to the meeting tonight to personally invite you to some of our upcoming events. I was gonna pull out a flyer, but I realized that I conveniently have our poster back there. And that is for Green Night Out at the Movies. And that is this Saturday in City Hall, so if you want to spend another night at City Hall, please come to our movie. The movie is called Wasted, The Story of Food Waste. And I really think this is an important topic, especially in Batavia. Right now, people don't feel like they have a lot of control for our footprint regarding climate change. And after researching this topic, better managing our food waste is a way that people in Batavia can personally affect change. Right now, 95% of our waste, our food waste, is landfill. And that contributes to methane emissions. Methane emissions from landfills are the 18%, which is the third highest source of methane emissions in the US. So it really is a big deal. So I really invite you to come, learn more. We have a great panel discussion at the end of the movie to talk about the topics of the movie a little bit more. The next event I want to talk about is that we're partnering with Batavia Depot Museum, and we're doing a seed swap on March 17th, Saturday morning. So bring some seeds, some pots. We're also gonna have an activity led by Anna Baker, who's one of our new members, and she's gonna show people how to regrow fruits and vegetables from their food scraps. Then on Monday, March 19th, we have an event that got moved due to the snowstorm in February, and that is a radon education event. So Abby Beck, I have to get the name right here, she is co-organizing the event with the Kane County Healthy Spaces. So this event will take place at the library on March 19th at 6:30 PM. They'll show a short movie, and they'll have information about radon awareness and what people can do about it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Anybody else? Thanks, Howard.
You bring our IT guy for that?
Hey, you got it done.
We got a guy.
He's out?
Item number four, ordinance 18-13, vacation of a public alley behind 321 through 337, East Wilson Street, memo from Scott Buie and Alderman Stark.
I have not been part of this discussion, so if you've been here for it, David?
We'll just turn it right over to Scott.
I'm gonna correct Howard's adjustment of this. This is talked about previously at an earlier committee, the whole, and we had some discussion with the, one of the affected property owners regarding the amount of alley that was being proposed to be vacated on the east side of the east side community center. And we tabled this in order to allow for the Park District to come and give their thoughts on why they wanted to have that amount of right-of-way vacated so that they can configure their driveways properly. So we do have representatives from the Park District and their consultants here tonight, and I'll just turn it over to them to let them explain, you know, why they would like to have what they're asking for.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having us over tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. With me tonight is Tim Frisbee, one of the engineers at ERA. They are consultants working on our parking lot issue. Starting back in 1995, when the Park District purchased the property from Holy Cross Church, we renovated the building and then immediately had to come and get a variance from the city due to a lack of parking, a smaller amount of existing parking than was required by the zoning regulations at that time. We have not added any parking, so therefore we still are not in total compliance with the now current, even more so with the current zoning that we have. We do have, we have plans that are being created right now that we will be coming to you in the future, hopefully yet this summer, be coming through the whole process, HPC, and then Plan Commission, and then you folks. But at this point, we are really still talking about our existing parking lot, and this is just a tiny bit harder to see. This is the existing building, and the existing parking goes from this line toward the building. We have a total of 90 spaces, five of which are, 85 are regular, five are handicapped, that we do comply with. The new additional parking, so I'm giving you a sneak preview, here, which will occupy the space where both the 13 North and 27 North, former residences, that old teen center, the 27 North was used as our teen center for many, many years, they will be gone, one torn down, and we will find out on Thursday whether or not we will have somebody interested in moving 27 North, or whether we will be taking it down as well. That request for proposal is due back on Thursday. So, as we began to talk with Scott and his staff about the vacation of this alleyway, we knew that, obviously, that we would be required to allow the existing residences and then the office to have ingress and egress rights into that, into their rear, rears of their properties, so not a problem at all. In the process, last August, July, August, in talking with Scott and with Chris Aiston, it kind of came to light that the garage that is existing on the property next to our ERO is, or was at some point in time, constructed eight feet over the property line. So that's really not been a problem because it's an existing noncompliance, and it's just always been that way. And we've all learned to live with that. In working with ERA, in designing our, what will be a new existing parking lot, because this thing is gonna have to come all the way out of the ground and be totally reconstructed, we find that this is really tight. The turning radiuses now in the drive aisles that are, exist, again, probably don't conform to what is regulated now. We are designing in the required 25-foot drive aisles here in A. Option A is the eight-foot strip of property, and option B would be the 13-foot strip of property. Oh dear. Oh.
Zoom in a little bit.
Oh, can we zoom in? Oh, there we go. See? Gotta get a kid to run. I should've known that. Anyway, so here's our new drive aisle. This is A. All right. So this is the eight-foot strip, which would allow, we would keep it right inside. This area right here is kind of a hub for a lot of things that happen on this property. Number one, it's one of our main accesses down the walk to Shannon Hall for our classes, for special events, for weddings, which we are having a very good season with, and a very good one last year, as well as some real problem drainage. Right now, the parking lot drains to the building, which is obviously not an ideal situation and never has been, but it also drains off of a roof right here and right into this area, just to the, what is the south of this handicap spot, there's a drain there. We have to continually clean it so that it doesn't pond there. Our guys take a really good care of that. That kind of thing all has to change. So we really don't know exactly yet, and that's what's being worked on right now, is what those elevations have to be when they, from the backside of this walk, the curbing around the, what would be the north side of the building that we refer to as the ERO, the east side rec offices. So to have more building five feet further will complicate that area as well as everything that happens right here in the, the aisles are one way south, turn, and one way north, or straight on out the alleyway. And the alley will remain as a two-way ingress egress for patrons as well as the folks in the three buildings. In, with ERA taking a look at this, with the additional five feet, which, you wanna go to me? We then push everything to the north by those five feet and complicate this area even more, and then we lose parking spots. So technically, we're not talking about the new parking yet because that hasn't really happened, and it's still some question, it still obviously requires all the approval. So to be 11 spots short of our 121, no, it's not 11, that's more than that, we should be at 121, we're at 90. To lose two more of those would really be a problem for us. Should we be successful and have approval of our new parking, we still lose the two, but then we still have this issue of ingress egress being extremely tight. We have a number of the retirement homes, the assisted living centers, all bring more than once a month, several times a month, they bring folks in for different events. Certainly, the third Wednesdays of the month, we have our seniors club, and that's well over 100 people, so we have a lot of those mini buses in and out, as well as many times a year, we have trips in coach buses that are then in and out of that parking lot, morning and evening, as well as hundreds of moms and little ones coming and going in that parking lot. And if any of you have had kids in our New Horizons program, you probably have experienced how difficult that lot can be at certain times of day. I guess, I think I've kind of covered all our really good base reasons. Having not had the discussion before, does that help some?
It does. I would ask, and you specifically said, you know, that the houses that we'll leave, those numbers aren't counted into the overall number of parking places. So when, when those houses are torn down and that becomes more parking, how much closer will that put you to the?
It will put us over.
Okay.
Yes. If we're 121, we would be going to 134. So we will be at and just above. So that really will solve a good problem.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody in the council have any questions of the Park District? Alan?
Has any of the property owners come to you about shared parking in that lot at off-times for businesses that they either have or would like to have there?
We met with Darren some weeks ago. We did not discuss that at any great length. There was, that idea was floated out there a little bit, but not really discussed, not that it may not be. That wouldn't be, I mean, as staff, we would have to bring that forward to the board, obviously, as potential.
You know, that was one of the things that was brought to our attention was as if, you know, the lot was reconfigured and the extra five feet was given, there would also be removal of cars on the street that would be parked on that property at certain times of the day, so that would be a net gain for the area. Whereas I, you know, I kind of looked at it as how does this end up working, you know, for 24 hours of a day if there's, you know, another 40 parking spaces out there, but nobody uses them for 10 hours of the day?
Uh huh.
What's the area truly gaining by taking the houses down and putting more parking out there?
So I guess part of the question is about the additional parking. It will be used primarily during the daytime as our event parking, as our drop-off, moms bring the little ones, everybody climbs out, everybody goes in the building, everybody comes back out. So for probably a total of two hours or so a day, the parking lot could be full. Or certainly it is now. It will be less full, obviously, if we are successful with the additional parking. The two houses that are just residences, we just, I mean, it hasn't been an issue with those folks. They have, they have garages and they seem to use them. There is a plumbing company that uses one of the small garages on Mr. Anger's property and would be within that new five-foot limit when they park there. So that's, I guess, gotta be, you know, dealt with, allowed. It's the fact that we were, we, if the extra five feet were granted and then a fence was built, then we really find ourselves in a, in a much tighter situation. And whether or not that, you know, that was, again, just a lot of discussion with them.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No. Done.
Drew?
Drew?
All right. So you mentioned that that area down by Mr. Anger's garage is a major hub of activity
It is.
For you. It's my understanding that a lot of that hub of activity also blocks access to that garage from time to time.
We, we had some, we did in the fall have quite a bit of construction activity where they were moving, and generally, that is not a
Load-in, load-out for events, stuff like that.
That does. That does happen, yes.
So allowing this reconfiguration allows that garage to be configured so that you can use that space fully for in-and-out, loading, whatever you need to do, without fear of blocking
Correct.
Access to that garage.
Yeah. And our
So that, to me, seems like, for your plan and some of the challenges you're facing, that seems like a positive benefit for you more than, more than a negative.
The, our original discussion at the end of last summer was that we were very willing, had no problem with allowing the extra, with the eight feet, the original eight feet, and that the, a new garage would be built to that, to that, what would be a new property line, and then all, the access for the garages would still be onto the concrete patio apron area and then into garages from there, or as parking stalls. So we don't have any, there's no problem with that. It's the extra five that's the, that becomes the issue. So if, we're more than willing to work with Darren being able to build out to that original eight-foot line where the, the north edge of the garage is, north edge of the west garage is, that, that I think we can accommodate without any trouble.
Nick, I know that you've been able to meet with the property owner and see his plans, so I'd really like to hear what you have to say about it.
Well, based on that statement, the garage is already there at the eight feet.
It is, correct.
Okay.
And
So there's nothing given to him there in allowing him to build there, it's already there. I think what Drew was saying is, why can't we somehow figure out a win-win situation? What's frustrating with this presentation is that on paper, I get what you're saying, and it makes, makes sense. If you were to walk out there, that's concrete, where that five feet goes, that's already the apron of his garage. Like, it's, it's a logical distance. And I think, just to clarify, that five feet that he wants to build out, he's not building the garage five feet and then a fence, that would incorporate the garage and the fence.
I would have to ask.
Well, with that, I think it's, you know, the timing's good on this because we look at this, we go over our SWOT analysis and what we want in this, in this town. We just approved one Washington, and we're adamant about, we want developers to come into town and invest now along Wilson and buy one Washington. And we talk about our strategic plan, and then we have a developer, somebody who wants to invest a couple hundred thousand dollars, and it's, it's a blockade. It reminds me of the Dunkin' Donuts guy where if it weren't for Steve Vesely, and he would have quit a long time ago. And it's just, the process isn't right. I can't understand why, we have an engineer here, this is their bailiwick, there's got to be a solution that is win-win for everybody instead of putting the city in the middle of two neighbors. I mean, I know my residents, who I represent, they're more interested in having development and extra parking on Wilson and easy access to Rosati's than one extra spot in the Park District, all due respect. So I've got to weigh that as well, but I still can't understand why we can't have a win-win draw-up, something that, that allows that and gets you, I mean, really, if he breaks down that garage and gives you a loading zone, which seems to be used often, that might give you access in reconstruction to the drainage and some of that stuff, instead of him just sitting back, leaving that garage door go wide open into your brand-new paved area. So I would implore you guys to, to work on a win-win situation here.
Scott, can you come up for just a second? I have some questions about the, the process here because, as I understand it from the original discussions which go back several ago, the city owns the alley, the Park District would like the alley for additional parking or egress, and to be able to have it dedicated directly to the Park District, so the city would no longer own that alley?
Correct.
Okay. And that's what is at the crux of the matter here, is who gets rights to that alleyway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Park District, you know, has been maintaining this alley for, you know, years since they've acquired the adjacent property. So even though the city owns this, the Park District has actually maintained it. So I think one other thing I just want to note is that the proposal, if they do get the 13 feet, you can see how it shifts the access drive further north, and they're gonna lose at least three parking spaces, maybe another one over here, and you're really not gonna have much ability to do a loading zone here until he shifts his garage around. So, you know, if that's something he's planning to doing, then fine, but, you know, until then, you're still gonna have that same situation here, whether you give him eight or 13 feet, it's still gonna be a problem.
Well, if he doesn't, if I could interrupt, if he doesn't change his garage, they lose nothing, because that, that's an apron that's logically at the entrance to his garage anyways. So if he ends up not building, what's, nothing lost. They're not gonna rip up that apron, are they?
The intention would be that we would own that apron, it would come out and would become our asphalt parking lot. We would remove that so that we don't need to worry about that little chunk of asphalt. So we would take that off at the property line, essentially at the front side of the fence.
Right at his entrance to his garage.
To his garage, correct, yes. So, and obviously, if he, between now and whenever the new garage is built or whatever, it's still his garage and it's still actively used.
What I'm having, and Tony, I'll get you in a second, what I'm having a hard time, based on what Nick just talked about, and what I know of the proposed project, and then the net gain of parking places overall, because you've said that you will be over in the amount of parking places that are required, I don't understand why these three or four parking places are that big a deal that we wouldn't allow both things to happen. That's where I'm having a hard time understanding why we can't all just play nice and everybody gets their way.
I guess beyond just the parking stalls, it's more the turning radius right here and the loading zone?
Well, if you cut down a couple parking places where that landscaped area is and, and made the radius just slightly different, you could still have a turning radius, and he could still have what he wants in terms of development. Yes, Mr. Uer?
You mentioned if he puts up a fence, then that makes it tight because of the 25 feet. If you don't, if he doesn't take the other five feet, you are still gonna use 25 feet, and his garage is there. So there's no difference in the tightness whether there's a fence or a garage, whether you get the 13 or the eight feet. So you'd still have to deal with the fact that there's a building there, or if he puts up a fence, a fence there with the same 25 feet, if you're just pushing your design up five more feet. So 25 feet is still 25 feet, and there's still going to be a structure regardless.
Yeah, correct. I guess the difference is the 13 feet or the eight feet is what we're talking about. So this building will remain in the same location, but if they're given an extra five feet right here, a fence could come up in this line theoretically, and that would take away the five feet where you have some overhang.
I understand that, but your other drawing is still showing 25 feet in that turning radius to his garage. So if he's given an extra five feet, it's still 25 feet to the fence on your redesign. It's still tight, it doesn't, if you're worried about it being tight, then you gotta give yourself more than 25 feet. If you're worried about big buses and stuff coming through there, anyway, you're, you're putting yourselves at risk at that point.
Yeah, go back. It's the 25-foot garage.
I think I'm seeing your confusion.
No, it's right there, it's 25 feet to his garage in that design.
Yeah. Yeah, this is 25 from the garage.
From his garage, up.
Yeah.
Right, 25 feet. That turning radius is exactly the same as 25 feet in your option B, except there'd be a fence there instead of a garage.
I suppose, I guess this line goes to the framed garage?
I understand.
And then when you go down here, it actually shifts up where the 25 starts at this line.
I get it.
Yeah.
But he's gonna put a structure there. There's a structure right now, or he gets five feet and puts another structure there, your 25 feet is the same. It's the same turning radius. You've lost a few spots, but it's the same turning radius.
Are, is it that you're taking into account the fact that the 25 feet also includes part of the grassy area there at the end, so that certainly isn't turning radius? So at that point where the grassy area is, it's less than 25 feet?
No, I understand, but I'm still talking to his garage. Right in option A, you're counting your 25 feet to his garage, and in option B, you're counting 25 feet to the extra five feet. So that turn is still the same.
The top of the double line.
The start of the turn is
I'm not seeing the lost spots in that.
And then the lowest part of the turn is not, right? Because the grassy area is dunking into the 25 feet?
Yeah. That's all pavement.
Yeah.
It's, it's marked off so that we have a turn there. So that's, those hash marks are just markings on the pavement, but would still
Tony, you had a comment?
Yeah, just to add to that, I'm, on the other, the two, difference between the two drawings, on the second drawing with the 13 feet, I'm not seeing where the lost So I see, I see that line now, the 25 feet goes beyond the line that was used on the other one. Where is the lost spots?
Within the island that's on the right.
One right here, one right here.
So there's two there.
This one right here may not be able to stay if we have to cut.
But is that a spot there? Isn't that an island?
This is a
On the right there.
A parallel spot.
This is a spot, it's behind the island.
And good evening, I'm gonna chime in for a second.
But actually, I had another couple more things. The, currently, when you had the load-in and load-out there, are you using that apron at all, the concrete apron there, that's there?
You know what, I can't tell you.
Okay.
We, we, the district, when our workers are there, whatever, We, the district, when our workers are there, whatever, try not to, but I can't tell you that if people coming in for events or weddings or whatever don't park on it to walk their stuff down to the building.
When there is a vehicle there that's loading and loading out, what does that do to the turning radius? Is that a problem for the turning radius then?
I would have to believe that there would be, if they're parked here to try to get stuff going down toward, to the building, that this would tighten things up and depending on, they, who knows if they park tight to the garage or how that looks, probably not. They probably park as, you know, they back right up to the end of the sidewalk a lot of times.
So then, so what you're saying is that concrete apron would come out and be asphalt right to the frame structure?
Yeah.
The garage now is pointing out toward that, the access to the garage is facing that.
Correct.
Is there no concern for when that garage is being utilized, moving cars in and out or possibly loading in and out for that business there? Isn't there concern for returning radius at that time?
I think that there isn't a lot of activity in and out of that garage that I have observed for a while. Darren, I don't know, you don't...
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff I may sure to notice, you know. I'm here to deal with it, I've never said anything about it, but yeah, it's essential that I go find people at times when they can gain access to it, but even sometimes more than just from the garage. I don't know, really, I don't want to go to the park today.
Can you come up to the microphone and speak, please? Because we want to make sure that we get this all on, both on television and on the recording.
And I did want to make mention, by the way, Allison Neemal, the executive director for the Park District, we really have been as good of a neighbor as we can with Darren. We've had meetings with him, we've spoken about this. And we have offered even, you know, can we do classes with him? We want to be a partner in the community with every business. So, you know, we've extended that all of a branch. We've offered doing a parking solution, a parking agreement with him, so he could have even more parking spots. So it's not just centralized to a garage. It's actually, we could work out an agreement where it'd be specific spots, but he could have those. And that would be even more desirable, because then he would, you know, we would agree on where those spots are going to be and there'd be no question, we could designate it, we can do permit parking for those spots. So, we really have been a good neighbor and he has to us as well. But now we're at the cornerstone, we're really trying to figure out what's the best solution.
Elliot, you had a comment too or a question?
I'd rather hear from Darren first.
Okay, let's hear from you.
Yeah, the only thing as far as the unloading and loading at Chanet Hall, I get it, no one wants to walk up chairs, tables, chafing dishes, DJ equipment, et cetera, up those stairs, they want to roll them through the back and they'll, they're in front of the garage. I don't stalk the garage and try to take photos and share them all with you. It's just, you know, it's been a handful of times over the weekends that it has been. More time than not, it's during the week, just when trades are there and making improvements, what have you. What about the event with the buses and stuff coming in? It's blocked some people in when they're trying to pull out of where we currently park today, so sometimes there is some spill over to the east side when we're trying to come in and go.
And if you were to have your dream solution, what would that be?
The additional five feet, the buildings would go, they would be equal in length with each other. They would probably go out about another two to three feet where they are within that five feet, leaving about two feet for the fence. So the goal would be to remove the fence that's there today and create 36 feet of depth so that we can have four tandem parking spaces, remove my fence that's there today, relocate that kind of to the front side yard and create a patio space there for ourselves, and then taking four cars out of the street, off of Wilson Street of the 14 available spaces.
Well, we're talking about that, if you were to redo those garages, the garage doors now face to the north.
Correct.
Correct, into the parking lot. They would change and face each other.
Correct.
So they would not, they'd face east and west on the two buildings, so then they wouldn't also face that. So then, deliveries out there wouldn't make any difference in that last 16 feet or whatever the depth of the garage.
At that point, no.
Because it would be the sidewall of the garage, not the access to the garage. So I think, as long as, to me, as long as the Park District and he can work out what the timetable is going to be and try to watch the delivery area until those doors change orientation to the inside of the lot, not to the outside of the lot, then I think it works. I mean, I think it could end up being beneficial because then it also, once that garage door changes position, that does leave room then even to turn that into a delivery zone alongside of the garage, because you would never be blocking the garage. So I think that that could be a win-win for both.
Anyone else on the council? Elliot?
I think the things to kind of focus and make sure that we have here is, it's already kind of a funky turn radius now, right? So, if we do nothing, it's still that. By giving Darren the five feet, he's able to improve his property and that improves the ability of the loading zone to not be obstructed. So, to me, that's kind of what I'm boiling this down to.
I would have to agree with you, Elliot, and I also, you know, if we vacate access of the alley and give it to the Park District, we have, and this is one of those things that I can't believe I'm saying, we've lost control of what happens in that property and we tend to not like to do that. We tend to like, like to make sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted. And so this is one where I don't want to just say, okay, fine, Park District, you can have that alley and you work, you guys work it out. I'd like to make sure that we do what's right for all parties. Nick?
I agree with you and I just want to emphasize the fact that we have two, from a city standpoint, two wonderful neighbors. I don't want this to be a, and you guys have worked well together it seems, so I don't want to put this into a win-lose. That's why I'm like, there's got to be a win-win in this situation where, you know, Darren can develop and do what we see and benefit the city and, I mean, you're already doubling your parking lot, I think it's going to be awesome there.
We hope so.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I think, I mean, we want to help you in that regard, helping us here, and I think we all work together to see a vision for the city, not just a vision for Darren, not just a city, a vision for the Park District, but some for the whole city that we work together, a big picture.
Susan?
Dave?
Kind of looking at it as a bigger picture, because you're talking about a very small portion of this quite large area now. And you've kind of got a design here that you're kind of showing us here. Have you had preliminary staff review on this yet? What are you going to do for detention? Is this parking lot going to work the way it's being currently designed that you're showing us?
We, the design, as shown in the one that we showed earlier, it won't require any detention. We're not disturbing enough area that it will require to have actually onsite detention. We will probably be including some BMPs, best management practices, the rain garden kinds of areas that would go, and this is going to be terrible to try to show you, in this larger green corner area, we would be using, by reason of having to get it through the area and then out to the storm sewers, we would be able to put it into some of those. But actually a detention basin, it's not, it's not part of what we had to plan, so.
What is, what is the timing in terms of, okay, so you've got your set parking lot now, and then the vacation of the alley creates a certain, that's like a step one project? And then the house is coming down and then additional parking, is that like step two and step three? I mean, like, how does this all work together and what is the timeline for these things?
Yeah, the vacation of the alley is kind of the kickoff for this whole thing. That gives us then the ability to begin their final planning for the new parking area, that extra, those extra spots over there. The houses are going to be coming down during May and mid-June, if we are taking both down. If one is being moved, it has to be done by the end of June in order for us to hit all of the milestones here and then be able to bid and then get contractors in there before the snow flies. So we, it's our intention to have the parking lot completed with all best things happening for us by hopefully end of October into November, or as long as we can go before the asphalt plants close.
So that's the whole new parking lot?
That's the whole, yes, both, that would be both.
So the maximum amount of time, if you were to not, you were to lose some parking places, as to not increase that turn radius, would be just a handful of months?
Well, and I guess I would have to, wherever Darren is, I don't think we'll lose any parking spaces at all until, if you see fit to give that extra five feet, it's really not going to change anything at this point.
Right.
It's just going to be technically his property out to a imaginary point out there or an invisible point, I should say. So I don't think our relationship is going to change at all there. Once we reconstruct and then re-stripe, we will be much more mindful of that, obviously. But I think probably until new construction happens on your site, there really won't be much change at all.
And Darren, when do you propose that would happen?
I believe maybe this time next year, you know, start my planning now, it's going to take a solid six, eight months, you know. I've got a dream list that keeps growing, so yeah, we'll see. Recently speaking, this time next year, once the ground blows.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Allison, is there anything you wanted to add or?
I thought Jim was going to speak again. Am I, come on? Get out of here like you're bossy. Don't get a microphone, huh?
I just want to drop.
Yeah, you know, the city has been a great partner of ours and by all means, you know, the Park District, we understand community and we understand working with people and, you know, the park board just wanted us to maximize the most parking spaces for the amount of space that we have available. And so we were trying to maximize and be efficient, but at the same time be good neighbors by offering up those parking spaces so he could have even more than what he was looking for. So really that was, you know, that in our eyes is a win-win, but if it goes a different direction, we will work with that as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Susan. So, just real quick, oh, you called, never mind, on that apron that you have out there, that's only, at that point, behind the garage is currently there. That's three feet?
It's closer to five.
Is it, is it five feet right there?
I think it's just shy of.
Okay. So, so my question is, you know, if there is a fence that's built on the inside of that? I mean, I guess, I guess that the issue that I'm having is, from a common sense standpoint, is, you know, we have a resident that's trying to do something wonderful and invest in his property. We have another neighbor that's trying to build out, you know, parking, which is fantastic. That whole loading area to me is the key to this thing. And I think you've been great and patient with, you know, with issues that have come up and, you know, and that's, which is wonderful. And you've, when there's been issues, you've talked to them as opposed to going to complain to anybody else, which is fantastic. But I do see that as turning this as being an absolutely huge win for the Park District, for having that, having that loading zone there. And, you know, if we need to tweak that, that plan a little bit to allow for that turn, I just, I see that as absolutely win for everybody. Because I know you have, you have plans to develop that area, which we, wholeheartedly as a city, want that to happen as well. So, you know, there's a whole lot more area out there that I would imagine if we could squeeze another parking space or two to compensate. And I know you've been, you've been gracious in offering spaces alongside there to them. Practically, when moms come in in the morning and they're, you know, dropping off kids and, you know, I mean, that's, that's, it's war. You know, I mean, it's, any space is, you know, is fair game. So, I think you kind of want to, you know, I would understand where his point, where he would want to have that parking on property. So, is my point. So, well, I think it's gracious, so I think that would be an issue.
Mark?
Just really quickly, Allison, you said you were, you were thinking of designated spots for Darren. So I guess I don't see the difference between designating three or four spots from, to him and losing three or four spots if he has that extra five feet.
Well, this would allow him a lot more flexibility in case plans didn't quite work out with what he was hoping with the businesses moving in. And that way, it's also kind of a seamless transition, right? It's not an eyesore, it's not something sticking out that looks like it was maybe not, meant to be not an engineering mistake or, you know, why is, we would really need to make sure people understand that that's a loading zone and at night, when people are being dropped off, for tween nights, that people are paying attention to where they're going. And just because it is going to be sticking out a little bit more. And it doesn't look like it's a seamless flow of the alley if there's going to be, you know, a garage that's out further than everything else.
I think too, to your, to your question, the spots that were discussed that might be utilized by Darren wasn't going to be like during the day. This would be, there would be some restrictions and time uses, weekend or evening or something like, whatever that would work out to be. During the day, during event, high event times, they would be used by our folks that are using the facility.
But to also go back to your point, those spaces would be very close to where he's at and it wouldn't impact the overall aesthetics of the area. And it would actually be further away from the entrance to the facility, so it would actually lend itself very easy access, whether handicap access, you know, easy access into his building.
And Tony, you had something?
Yeah, just had, I have been out there and looked at it and I'm very excited about the possibilities that Darren has to do that. And I see this, Nick, you touched on it, that that's what we want. We want more economic development in the downtown area. And I see that kind of project is, you know, especially across the street with what Rosati's is doing, to spark other ideas too in that block itself and being in the fourth ward, I got to support that.
I'm right there too. Anybody else? Okay, so Scott Buening, back to you. Obviously, this is not a slam dunk, we're vacating that alley. So what do we do now?
Well, we need direction as to which way you want to go. If we are looking to change the plat that has been drafted, there is a cost to that and we would have to have the surveyor go back and redraft that plat. So, my suggestion is the cost should be borne by those that are asking for it as opposed to the city, so.
What type of cost is that?
I think it was around $600 to mend that plat.
Darren, where did you go? Don't go too far.
And otherwise, we are not charging anybody for the land itself.
Right, I know, that's what, Darren, I don't know if you heard what Scott just said, but it would be about $600 if you have the plat redrawn. Would you be willing to pay for that? Okay. Okay, so what does the council think? Should we send this back to staff with direction to have the plat redrawn to accommodate those five feet?
I don't know. Does it, does it need to go back or can we give, can we take a motion on it tonight giving direction and then it can just go right to city council?
I think you could just go right to city council if your motion is to approve it with the 13 feet, we'll just have it drafted and then put it on the regular agenda for city council once that's drafted.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we recommend a city council ordinance 18-13 vacation of a public alley behind 321 to 337 East Wilson Street with the change of 13 feet? What was, sorry, Scott, what is exactly the wording, 13 feet?
Second.
So, motion by Stark and second by, it came from over there, I didn't see.
Me and Tony.
Oh, Saron, okay. Oh, let's do a roll call, Jenny. Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan absent.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
And Attack is absent. Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, of course.
I just want to let the Park District know that we'll be just as accommodating when we get to putting your parking lot in behind that.
All right, thanks. And I do need to apologize, I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to announce that there are two items that we're not going to be having on tonight's agenda that are on the agenda. And that is the item number nine, which is the presentation on the branding project by Spar Incorporated, and then the discussion on the strategic planning, which is item and how long we think these items are all going to take, are going to be shoved off until the 13th, which is the next committee meeting of the whole, next week.
Should we ask if there's anybody here to?
I, I, we could, if there's anybody here that was here, that came here tonight to discuss those two items? Okay, seeing none. All right, so we're going to move on then to item number five, which is ordinance 18-17, amending the official zoning map of the city for 106 and 126 South Mallory Avenue.
Okay, the Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on February 21st to review the proposed comprehensive plan land use and zoning map amendments requested by Dan Nagel for property at the southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Nagel. The vacant property is adjacent to the 711 southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Nagel, wait a minute, gas station convenience store. Ordinance 1818 would amend the comprehensive plan's land use to a light industrial land use designation in ordinance 18.
Are we in the wrong one?
Yeah.
And we're supposed to be on Mallory Street?
Yeah.
Res zoning on Mallory.
Hold on. Here we go. Okay.
I would have brought my flags, but.
Thank you. I was going, okay, this is, I could have sworn you said two numbers in a row. He said 18 and 19. Okay, so ordinance 1817. This is amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia, 106 and 126 South Mallory. And the city of Batavia is the applicant. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on February 7th and 21st to review a proposed zoning map amendment for the subject properties. The property at 106 Mallory covers 1600, 187 square feet and is owned by Master Cast. The property at 126 South Mallory is comprised of two tax parcels, one owned by Mark One Limited and the other owned by Duel and Duel. The property is 35,087 square feet. Ordinance 1817 would change zoning designations for the properties from the current light industrial district to the neighborhood commercial district. So the background for this is, the fire of 2014, Master Cast had the building razed after the fire. The building at 126 South Mallory was a foundry and was damaged by the same fire. The owner authorized city inspection of the building in 2017, found unsafe conditions and many code violations. The building was deemed unfit for occupancy. The unsafe conditions and violations remained uncorrected, and the city has ordered the building be demolished. The matter is under litigation. Court proceedings are scheduled to resume April 18th and is separate from the rezoning proposal. In September of 2015, the city council amended the comprehensive plan and its land use map to create a focus area plan for West Town that includes these properties. The city adopted a redevelopment plan in TIF number four district for this area in January of 2016, and these documents acknowledge a transition in much of West Town from industrial character to one of commercial and residential land uses. So then, this goes on, on February 7th, several neighboring residents spoke, and some suggested residential use would be more appropriate, while others were hopeful that the building at 126 South Mallory would be, would finally be removed. Diane Duel, owner of 126 South Mallory, requested future zoning be flexible. Contract purchaser Tyler Hook stated his intention to invest some $200,000 to rehabilitate the building. Broker Bruce Lahar, representing Mr. Tyler, explained that Mr. Hook would like to operate a museum for classic automobiles and related signs in the building, and there may be some sales of automobiles. Attorney Ken Shepero, representing Mrs. Duel and Mr. Hook, stated the commission take time in deciding a rezoning recommendation. He acknowledged staff's explanation at the hearing that the sale of automobiles with the properties zoned L1 or NC would require zoning actions and stated that he is hopeful this could be done for Mr. Hook. Additional summary information is in the staff memorandum to Plan Commission. At the February 21st hearing, one neighboring resident spoke with concern of the building and its present negatively, presence negatively affecting the neighborhood. Mr. Shepero informed the commission that Ms. Duel does not object to the proposed zoning change, and he believes the proposed NC district will help facilitate future zoning approvals for Mr. Hook's business. The commission found that the proposed NC district would be appropriate for the subject properties. So, alternatives. The city council can approve ordinance 1817 to zone the subject properties NC neighborhood commercial as presented, request the Plan Commission review alternative zoning classifications, or reject the proposed changes. So the pros to this, the proposed action classifies the subject properties in a zoning district consistent with their land use designations in the comprehensive plan. Cons, the staff has not identified any negative circumstances to this action. In terms of budget impact, there's only minimal costs moving forward to amend the zoning map. And timeline for actions, there's no required timeline. Cowal recommendation of ordinance 1817 will allow for final action by the city council on March 19th. Ordinance 1817 is drafted in anticipation of this date for final action. And by a vote of five to zero, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the zoning ma, amendment as presented. So, does anyone have any questions of Joel? No? Alan?
This development that they're talking about doing in there with the automobile museum and stuff, is he trying to buy the property from Master Cast as well next door, or just the one building that's there?
Just the property at 126, not the former Master Cast.
Okay, and then would that include the other little small piece?
That's like an exterior courtyard to the south of that? Yes.
I, I guess the one thing I, we, we won't have to rezone or change or conditional use anything if they decide to sell cars from that?
We would need to do zoning action.
We would have to do that?
Condition use. We would need to do that under the current zoning, the light industrial, or, or the proposed.
Okay. That's really the only questions that I had on it.
Joel, the $200,000 that's proposed to, to spend on that building, I mean, I, I have not been in the building, I've only seen it from the exterior. That, to me, doesn't even sound, seem like a drop in the bucket in terms of how much it will actually cost. So is this a realistic proposal, or is this just kind of a?
That, that is what was stated at the hearing. After the hearing, I was informed that the, Mr. Tyler Hook realized it would take substantially more, but he didn't say, he hasn't indicated that he wouldn't pursue it. He just said it would cost more.
I was going to ask that, Susan. I was going to ask Joel, you know, if, if this is passed and this potential owner gets further into this and decides not to go ahead with it, or gets halfway through it, and now we're stuck with the same thing we're stuck with right now, what authority, what control do we have other than what we have right now? And that's put it up for, take it to court for condemnation, huh?
The, the court proceedings are, we intend to move forward with that if we don't have any action with anything else. And the building would eventually have to come down. The owner, the, the owner realizes that Mr. Hook understands what's going on, as well as his attorney, Ken Shepero, who is representing. Mr. Hook, they understand the pending action, and they're still interested in the property.
Anyone else have any comments?
Our intention is not to dismiss the court action until we are comfortable with, you know, what is moving forward on any redevelopment of the property, so.
I'd be curious as to what the mayor's thought is of this proposed use over there.
I've never met Mr. Hook. I mean, I think it's a credible use if, in fact, he can do it, but I guess I would share the same reservation that was just raised by Alderman Stark. That I, you know, I was in that, I've been in that building several times during the most recent fire and the days after the most recent fire, and the damage in there was significant. I mean, you know, there's, and as we've, if anybody can see driving by the building, parts of the roof are missing, parts of the walls are missing. It's constantly taking water inside. But on the same token, I think we should be thankful we got somebody wanting to come in there and do something with it, because, you know, that, that's a very nice neighborhood that maybe has two of the biggest eyesores in Batavia sitting there right in their face. One here and one down the street a little ways at Main and Mallory. So, you know, we need to do something in both cases. And I certainly would, as long as Mr. Hook and Ken Shepero want to tell us they're going to do this, I guess I would take the chance and explore with them what it is they really want to do.
Joel, I have a couple of concerns about this. The first is, if we change the zoning and allow for this use, then I guess in my mind, those two lots, those adjacent lots, if you, to go to the ultimate reason why we zone that as a part of a TIF district for redevelopment is we were hoping for some type of residential. So if we put a museum or leave that building, then don't we cut down on the amount of available space for new construction?
You do. The, the comprehensive plan had a designation of, of neighborhood commercial on the property as well as residential. So it was contemplated equally that it could be commercial or residential, and the neighborhood commercial district does allow for loft-style residences.
And then my second concern was, you know, we've allowed two small auto dealer-esque type places in the industrial park. Would we want to do that in something that is residential?
Well, the, the requirement of a conditional use, we can impose conditions such as no display of vehicles for sale outside. The way Mr. Hook described the business, it would primarily be a museum, and there may be vehicles offered for sale inside of the museum, but it would not become a location where people would go first to purchase cars. That's compared to the recent applica, conditional uses we've done in the industrial district where those were automobile dealerships, not traditional automobile dealerships, but internet-based.
Anyone else have any questions now? So you're looking for direction on these ordinances?
These ordinances are up for consideration for a recommendation for the full city council as presented. Staff has recommended approval.
So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 1817, amending this official zoning map of the city at 106 and 126 South Mallory.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll move that to city council, and I think we should talk about it.
Okay. Ordinance 18-18 is amending of the land use map for the comprehensive plan for the city of Batavia. Daniel Kramer, on behalf of Daniel Nagel, is the applicant on the southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard. Alderman Stark.
Okay. Now, you already heard the first part. So, this property has been zoned for commercial use under plan development since 2000. Since that time, it's remained undeveloped. Direct access from Fabian Parkway is prohibited, and the proposed change would align the comprehensive plan land use designation for all property that is being purchased by VWR along with their existing buildings. At the public hearing, Mr. Kramer explained the background of the property and the challenges for commercial development. He noted that Mr. Nagel and VWR began discussing a potential sale last year and recognized that a land use map and zoning map amendment would be necessary to facilitate future expansion onto this property. Only one member of the public addressed the Plan Commission. Mike Philstrom from VWR International noted the company had recently closed on the purchase of the property and that the company was evaluating plans for future warehouse expansion on the site, including currently zoned light industrial zoning parcels to the south of the subject property. Mr. Philstrom acknowledged that those plans would need to return for review. The commission agreed that the proposed change in land use is appropriate given the excessive vacancy under the existing designation. Commissioners discussed potential locations of future street connections. It was noted that with the proposed frontage and access to the adjacent site, there were several opportunities to provide an access to Nagel Boulevard without directing industrial traffic into the adjacent neighborhood. Commissioners agreed that the potential expansion of long-tenured industrial resident would have positive benefits for the community. The commission agreed to the findings for approval and recommended approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. The alternatives, of course, are, we can prove it as presented, request for another review by the Plan Commission, and, or reject the proposed change. The pros, the proposed action places property owned by VWR International under one land use and zoning map designation. Cons, staff has not identified any cons, and there is no immediate budget impact. And staff impact, there is none. So again, there's no timeline required for this, but it would go on the city council agenda for March 19th if we move it forward. And by a vote of six to zero, Plan Commission recommends the approval of it. And Joel, I appreciate that they will not connect the streets through the fourth ward. So, would, anyone have any questions about this? Hey, would someone like to make a motion?
I do have one question.
Oh, you do?
So, VWR has purchased this piece of property?
Yes.
And not that it has anything to do with this question, but do they own property further south on Nagel Boulevard also? Or just this piece of property?
I think they own to the east on Redant. The, the VWR is located to the east.
Right, they're located east, but I'm just curious as if they own further south on, for future expansion also.
They purchased, they purchased the gray area just south of Orion.
They did.
Extended, so that's all that acreage as well they purchased, yes.
Okay. Good to know.
And Joel, Mr. Philstrom is here from VWR?
No, Dan Kramer.
Kramer, Mr. Kramer is here. Would, did you have anything you want to add or say, or?
Just that the Plan Commission treated us very well at the ZB.
Thank you.
He's probably sick to see me after 20-some years of this project. To answer the question, the entire gray area on the east side of Nagel Boulevard was bought by VWR and closed right at the end of January. That's about four to half acres, and the four, or, well, the crosshatch area next to the orange is about two and a quarter acre, and that's the subject of the petition. So VWR would own everything there.
That's good to hear.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, did we get to the motion?
No.
No. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
And that's ordinance 18-18, we just made that motion on, that's amending the land use map. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, we'll go right to ordinance 18-19, amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia, southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard.
Somebody like to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Tony? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries too.
So we should probably discuss that too?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so that's going to be on the next city council meeting, which will be, what, the 19th, did you say, Susan?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to item eight, ordinance 18-16, amending the land use map of the comprehensive plan for the city of Batavia. Applicant at 1025 through 1119 North Washington. Alderman Stark.
Sounds good. So on February 7th, the Plan Commission conducted a public hearing for proposed comprehensive plan land use map for property located within the address range of 1025 to 1119 North Washington Avenue. I should know where this is. The area subject to the hearing is comprised of commercial uses along the west side of the street. Okay. City staff, after reviewing use patterns within the area, proposed the land use map amendment to align with the present uses. This will facilitate a continuous commercial zoning district should these properties seek annexation into the city in the future. The draft ordinance would approve this change on the land mass lap, land use map, redesignating the property from residential greater than eight, less than eight to 15 units per acre to community commercial. The background of properties, received the present residential eight to 15 units per acre designation in 2007 with the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The subject area includes a mix of incorporated and unincorporated properties. Staff believes that the change would help maintain a retail presence in this area and would provide appropriate zoning as properties in this area seek annexation for utilities. Without such a change, annexation would result in the creation of non-conforming uses and conditions. Staff found several goals and policies of the comprehensive plan that would be implemented by the change. Please see the staff report for additional analysis. At the hearing, two members of the public addressed the Plan Commission. Both residents sought clarification of the proposed area of change in relation to their property. One was along the east side of Washington Avenue, the other owned property in Sunnyside Park. Neither property would be affected directly by the change. Staff noted that Sunnyside Park remains designated for high, higher density residential. Is Sunnyside Park what the mobile home park is? Is that Sunnyside Park? Okay. I didn't know it had a name. Thank you.
No, this is actually, this is actually north of that.
Sunnyside Park is north of Oak Terrace.
Oh, Oak Terrace.
Oak Terrace is.
Excellent.
Yeah, Sunnyside Park is the smaller.
Are those homes, tiny homes? Along the river?
Sunnyside.
Okay, that's Sunnyside. Do you have to go down the hill to get to them?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Four-wheel drive.
And is that incorporated or is that unincorporated?
Unincorporated.
Okay. And is the manufactured home park, is that incorporated or unincorporated?
Incorporated.
Okay. The Commission discussed the proposed change and nonconforming status in relation to the Comprehensive Plan. Commissioners agree that the change would appropriately reserve areas for higher density residential while providing opportunities for commercial to continue in place. The Commission recommended the approval of the proposed land use amendment. And our alternatives, again, are we can follow this, we can send it back to Plan Commission, or we can reject the proposed change. The pros, the proposed action places property along North Washington Avenue in land use designations that are in alignment with current uses, which will facilitate future zoning action upon annexation of properties into the city. Cons, staff has not identified any negative circumstances, there's no budget impact, there's no staff impact. Again, if we recommend this to council, it'll go on the 19th agenda. By a vote of five to zero, Plan Commission recommended that we approve this. Joel, when it comes to this, how much of that is unincorporated and how much is incorporated? And are there plans? I know Scott has worked a lot on, like, getting stuff incorporated, but when you've got people who already have businesses there, it makes it much harder.
Well, I'm just trying to bring up a map to show where the incorporated, unincorporated areas are. What this is doing, we are actually just proposing to take the areas that are largely commercial now and putting them in an appropriate land use category.
And keeping them commercial.
Right. This does not propose any change in land use that we see on those properties at this time. There's no change with that proposed.
While he's looking that up, in that map, the only properties that are actually in the city limits right now are the trailer park and then part of Lou's Drive-In Restaurant. Part of the parking lot is unincorporated, but the restaurant itself is actually in the city limits. Those are the only parks that are actually in the city right now for the amended areas.
If it's, this is probably a dumb question, but if it's not part of the city now, how can we create a land use for it if it's not ours?
Yes, we normally have, under state law, authority to plan not only areas within the city limits, but within a mile and a half of our boundaries for future growth and future development for what may happen. So we are allowed to plan, and we have planned in our current Comprehensive Plan and old Comprehensive Plans for areas outside of our boundaries up to a mile and a half from our current limits. So this is just an amendment for what that is. So right now, the existing plan shows that is multi, that areas completely is multifamily. We're trying to just reflect more of what actually is happening there as opposed to some of the other uses that are, you know, shown as multifamily.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions now that you've seen the map or heard the changes? Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So that might have been you or in Malay. Just sent a city council ordinance 18-16, amending the land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for 1025 to 1119 North Washington Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Concerned.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to skip, as I said, item number nine, which is the presentation for the branding project. We're going to go right to item number 10, which is the McKee Street pedestrian crossing. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. This will hopefully wrap up what we asked for questions and answers last time, and I think Gary is getting ready to come up and give us his take on it. Gary?
Thank you. And as Alderman Wolf just summarized, all we did is a very brief memo to come back to you. Following up on the February 13th committee meeting, staff did reach out to our attorney and get their opinion on a couple of key questions that were raised back on the 13th. The first being, if you recall, one of our rapid flashing beacons was hit by a vehicle on the night of Super Bowl Sunday. And so one of the questions out of committee was, can we use the spare device that we have and reinstall that as a replacement for the one that was damaged? And then, so I'll take that question first before we run on the second question. I did include the attorney's response, which is consistent with really kind of what staff's opinion was, in that because the device was effectively destroyed and not simply easily repaired, that it was at its end of useful life, and therefore, following the FHWA's guidelines, it would not be advisable for us to reinstall it or appropriate for us to reinstall that device. So that's why staff is recommending that McKee Street will basically remove, and we have already taken out, the other rapid flashing beacon, and just install standard crosswalk signage at that, at that location at this time until council gives further direction. So that's the first item.
Okay. I guess my question would be is, if we were really asking permission for it, wouldn't we have to go to IDOT to ask them if we could reinstall the backup one we have into that position?
We can. I mean, IDOT has given written direction, but we certainly could go to IDOT and say, can we install this?
Okay. Because, I mean, if they're the authority that says yes or no to it, I think we should ask them.
Okay. They've, again, they've given written direction. They've already kind of provided direction to agencies saying what you can and cannot do.
I mean, I just, I feel like, you know, we spent the money, we wanted this to work, we've got the rest of them all installed, and yet, the first time something gets damaged, we're ready to just throw our hands up and say, forget it. And, you know, we're trying to talk about how we're going to make downtown friendly, how we're going to talk about it as the avenue and not State Route 31, and yet, the first time something goes wrong, or the first time something happens, we just turn our backs on it and walk away. You know, I want us to try to make this work, and I think if we're going to just give up on it that quickly, we might as well take all of them out and just walk away from it and just say, we're just not going to do this. And.
Is that a motion?
No, that is not a motion.
I mean, there are other options, Alderman. We've talked about it.
Right, and I am.
We could pursue a Hawk system through the state. We could pursue traffic studies to see if the intersection meets warrants for a true traffic signal. And those are two viable options that we could do.
Right, and I also want to see us have just the striped crosswalk at Houston Street, where the crosswalk should be, because that's where it lines up with the bike path access.
And that's something that is proposed here.
Right, and I know that there's a timeframe to get a response back from IDOT.
Right, right. And there has been, we're not just giving up on it. In the intervening period of time from when we had installed these and we've been having these discussions back in November, that's when the Federal Highway Authority put out their new directive.
Right, their memo.
So that's, that was really the change over.
Right, and again, I guess I would fight for the fact that the end of its useful life is when we run out of parts to fix something that gets damaged. I mean, if we have a vehicle on our fleet and something happens to it, if a taillight goes on, we don't just get rid of it because the lights don't work on it.
No, and I agree, and I think that even the attorney's opinion is consistent with that. But if that same vehicle gets, you know, right on collision and it's declared total, we don't go and try and put a lot of parts and pieces to fix it again and get it back on the road. We basically scrap it at that point.
Right, but if we break a plow on the highway because they put the.
Razor reflectors.
Razor reflectors in the wrong spot, we don't just stop plowing the roads because we broke a plow.
But we would if there was a directive from a federal or state authority that told us to stop doing it.
Yeah, and it's not just broken, Alan. It has to be totally replaced with a new one. If it was just a blinking light that stopped blinking, then we wouldn't be going against the state directive. But to take a whole new one out of storage and put it in, that flies in the face of what the state has told us we can and cannot do.
We can replace light bulbs.
Alan, all that aside, I mean, I think it's pretty clear what IDOT has said we can and can't do. And I'm not looking at this like we're just turning our backs on it. I look at it like we've got directive from IDOT on what we can and cannot do, even though sometimes we don't like it. But then I think most importantly, as much as we're trying to do the right thing, we've also got our chief of police that's telling us that there was never a recorded incident prior to putting this thing up, and since it's been up, there's been three. So maybe it just isn't the right thing to do, and maybe we're realizing it's not the right thing to do, and maybe the fact that it's gotten hit and we can't replace it according to IDOT is giving us motivation to take it down and look at what another possible solution could be.
We've had two incidents at Wilson Street and 31 with pedestrian accidents there. Does that mean we stop allowing people to cross with a signalized crossing there?
I'm not arguing that. I'm just, we're talking about McKee Street.
Right, and I understand that. And, you know, my problem is, is we did this, it made it through one season, and now, because of the federal government and its infinite wisdom saying, we're not going to fix them when they get to the end of their useful life, we're going to say, this is it, its useful life is over.
But that's what happens, as we just saw here where the park district didn't get what they wanted and somebody else did. Government speaks, and when the, when the law is laid down on the table, you have to adhere to it.
If you want to look at it from the other side, we're also one memo away from them taking these away from us. The state could at some point recognize that these things are not good, and they could issue a memo and ask us to take them down. Couldn't that happen someday?
So there was an interim approval back in 2008. They tried to kind of split the compromise and say, you can keep those up, but you can't put up any new ones. There technically would be nothing wrong with them saying, you know, our interim approval from 2008, we want you to take those out. I mean, they have the control.
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be surprised if you opened that letter?
Not ultimately surprised, no.
Thank you.
I mean, they're, they're proven to be unsafe.
That's, I mean, that's a strong statement, I guess, because, because I don't think they have been proven to be unsafe. I think throughout many parts of the country, they were proven to be more than safe, which is why the interim approval was done to begin with. We have had multiple installations in town where I think they've provided a benefit. This particular installation with the four lanes and limited visibility and lower lighting, this was the one that caused.
That's, well, my point is with the four lanes, that's an unsafe situation. Okay? If it's two lanes, not so much. Okay? Because you don't have people passing one another. Now, we can go back in history and say, you know, we should have, if we're going to petition IDOT, we probably should have petitioned strongly to have the crosswalk put on Houston Street. I mean, that's, that screams for a crosswalk, much more than McKee.
That's what we've, yeah, and that's what we've done now, per the council's direction on the 13th.
Come up and speak, John, if you're going to speak.
Per the council's direction on the 13th, that's what we've done now. We've gone back to them to say, can we put in a crosswalk at Houston Street? And, you know, five years ago, we actually, as Mr. Campbell just said, we actually got one approved with a center island, which provided refuge for residents as they were going across four lanes of road, and that one ultimately was chosen not to proceed forward.
Right. I, I mean, I voted for that. I thought that was the right thing to do. I lost. But it, it looks like now we're getting back to it, that that's what we're looking to do again. Maybe not put in an island, but get some sort of a crosswalk.
So the crosswalk, IDOT requested some documents from us, which we then provided to them, and we've been told, as of, as of last week when I wrote the memo, probably about four to six weeks, they'll get us official determination on whether a crosswalk can go in.
I mean, I just, you know, I know Alan is, works there, and he sees every day what goes on there, but every time I, I go up Houston Street, I see people crossing the road at Houston Street. Rarely do I see people activating that beacon and crossing at McKee. That is a rare occurrence to me, and it's mostly people going across at Houston. It's just path of least resistance. So I think that's a good procedure to follow, something to follow the road.
So when we modified the crossing from Houston to McKee, the Bike Commission also took steps to designate McKee as the official route. And, I mean, so there was, there was an effort to get pedestrians to come up to McKee and cross that McKee Street, because that was, now had become an official crossing.
John, please come up and share your thoughts.
Well, I think, I'd like to. Thanks, I think Gary's right on track. You know, it's just, which are the priorities? I don't think, I would love to, the Bike Commission is clearly in favor of a crossing at Houston, no doubt about it. We're not in favor of removing one at McKee until you have one at Houston. And I think, you know, as a council, I would recommend that you seriously think about that. One of the things that we have been trying to do, and Gary just started on it, is link all the routes, and we're pretty much, I think, set for signage to go up to tie a lot of things together. Right now, Houston is our, I mean, excuse me, McKee is our designated route to go and tie on the west part of McKee, west of Van Norwick and everything else. Now, what do we do if those crossings come down? Where, you know, there's too much unknown at this point. I feel like removing the existing crossings would now be a step backwards, not a step forward. And I think we've been moving forward, let's continue that momentum. The Commission feels that way. We would love to have a crossing at Houston, especially now that the lane is up on, you know, and you've got sidewalks on both sides on the hill on Houston. I mean, it is, I think it's used more heavily now than it was when the original crossing was supposed to go in. So let's all work together and figure out a good solution, and maybe having one at Houston as well as McKee is ultimately the solution. Originally, we really supported the idea of the flashing crosswalks at McKee more to slow down traffic than to actually be used as a crossing at Houston, because we knew that pedestrians would cross at Houston more than they would at McKee. And we knew one of the challenges of that stretch is the speed in which cars come off the hill down by north, you know, and into that intersection. So we love the idea of having more signage, lights, anything to slow traffic down, and we would encourage that too. So I hope that helps.
So maybe we can petition IDOT to slow traffic down. You know, what is it now, 30 degrees, 30 miles an hour?
We do think if, if, we would love to see a Hawk go up there, and that's the overhead.
Right.
And there has now been precedent set in region, in our region in IDOT, which there wasn't at the time that these were put up. We've now found them in Schaumburg and other areas. So, you know, maybe we push on that, which I think is a much more effective way to alert cars. That was also what we wanted at, at the Musart Millview Cross, not Musart, but Les Erns and Millview Crossing. But IDOT denied that because there wasn't one in northern Illinois. Now there are. Those are the most appropriate for that speed of vehicles coming in. Still, the absolute safest is a pedestrian island in the middle, and that's really, if we want to do it right, how we want to do it.
I agree. Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Alan, I have a question. Wasn't there a reason, like, even though now there are Hawk lights, aren't those in different districts or something? Isn't that one of the reasons that, Gary, that we haven't been able to put them in our area? Isn't Schaumburg a different district or something in terms of?
Schaumburg would be District 1, and Hawks have been in place, I know, in Peoria for a while now, which is District 2 or 3. So, I mean, and I, I'm just hearing tonight for the first time that IDOT has approved one up in Schaumburg, and that's great if they have, because that does open the door then for, for all of us to have that leverage to be able to say to IDOT, you know, that's what we would like.
I guess it would be, it would be different if it's.
They're not installed on state routes.
Yeah.
That's the difference, is they're not on state.
I was going to say, if it's crossing Route 72 or Route 58.
Right.
Then you can say, okay, then Route 31, okay, but if it's not a state route, that's where, I kind of remember we've had that discussion before, if it's not a state route.
And that was the argument against.
The Ranger Brookfield has one, I know.
Having a striped crosswalk at Houston Street, was they said they didn't do it across four-lane highways in District 1. Well.
That's what it was. I knew it was something to do with the district.
Three miles away in Geneva for eight blocks, there are ones across four lanes of a state of a state route, 38. So, you know, I don't like a lot of I-DOT's arguments when they say, well, we just don't allow that, or this doesn't happen in District 1. Well, it does. And, you know, if there is one that's in Schaumburg, let's get pictures of it, let's get the information, because if we have to go after approval for I-DOT for one, I want to have something to support it with, so that way we can make it safer. I mean, the whole idea was, doing this was to try to make the crossings safer. And if that's what it takes to do it, and we have to argue for it, then that's what we have to do.
I think that what's interesting about this is in the St. Pete Beach area in Florida, they've just started installing these flashing crossings mid-blocks, because it'll go for blocks without any kind of crosswalk. So, they've started putting these in, and it's five lanes of traffic and a lot of old people. And I have seen, because no one knows what to do. They push the button, they start walking. I have seen more people slamming on the brakes or running out of the ways of cars, because it's like state to state, area to area. No one has been educated as to what these flashing lights mean. So, if you go to Colorado, you go to California, everybody stops. You go to Florida, you go to Illinois, no one knows what they're supposed to do. So, it's very odd, you know, that...
Well, it's a cultural thing. I think I told the story to council, I mean, my wife and I were in Madison last summer, and we were on a regional trail that would then approach a fairly busy roadway. We were kind of taken aback when, when we were still on the trail, all the cars on the roadway were stopping for us. And I'm like, what's going on?
Yeah.
Because you're in Chicago, you've got to wait there, and as they all drive by.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a cultural thing. Anyways, I mean, really kind of then for, just so I'm clear on direction, right now, staff was recommending taking no further steps with the asterisk, I guess, that if council would like us to pursue a Hawk or pursue traffic counts or whatever, we certainly can take whatever steps council would like for us to do with respect to the McKee Street crossing.
Didn't we take this out of the budget, though?
It is out of the budget.
Yeah, it was out of the budget. Regardless of whether it's in the budget or not, I think we should pursue whatever is possible out there, so that way, if we can have an approval for it, we can figure out how to pay for it. If the option is available to us and it takes us two years to fund it, at least we know the option is there and we need to fund it.
Sure.
You know, I think that that's something for us to identify, to make a smart decision about what we do when we get to budget time. If that is that important to us, that we want to fund it, we figure out how to fund it.
I agree. I think, again, we called this particular intersection out for the sake of safety. If we're serious about that, then we probably have to try and find a way. But we know it's not going to be a rapid turnaround dealing with I-DOT. So, let's get that process started, and hopefully we'll get something approved that we can move on perhaps for early next year.
Well, and I also think it's not just one thing that solves that.
No.
You know, and if it's, okay, we have to petition, and it takes us over the course of two years to come up with funding to put another signalized crossing there, in that time, can we also do another speed study and ask I-DOT to lower the speed limit? You know, I mean, I think that there are many things that could contribute to that being safer.
So, there's a couple of things here. Exploration of a Hawk or exploration of a traffic signal, probably both would require the use of an outside consultant. And we don't have budgeted funds for that, but we certainly can get proposals for that and bring that to council if council would like to do. Second item regarding speed, and it's been mentioned two or three times tonight, that takes a letter from the mayor to I-DOT requesting that I-DOT perform a speed study to evaluate speed limits in that area. That's the step that has to get taken. That was last done, the mayor can correct me, the last, that was last done only like three or four years ago. It hasn't been that long since it's been done. But we can certainly have him write that same letter again to I-DOT. That's not something in the city's control. That comes straight from I-DOT. So, those are two separate things. And again, if we can, we can and will go out and get proposals from a consultant, if you guys would like to explore the Hawk and traffic signal, we would need to bring that back to you. That's not a budgeted item.
Do we think we want to do that this year?
I think so. I think, too, seriously, is, you know, Batavia Avenue is in our downtown. And it doesn't get treated as part of our downtown because cars are flying through. And so, we're talking about pedestrianism and accommodating pedestrians and people walking about, going into our shops. So, I think we should really pursue lowering the speed limit. Again, try it. I know we tried it a few years ago. Try it again, because that is the center of our downtown. And we want people walking along Wilson and get up to Batavia Avenue and decide, you know, I think I'll cross the street here, and cross the street and just stroll through our town, and not think, well, as you well put it years ago, Gary, Batavia Avenue becomes a moat. And we've got to get rid of that thought. And it's, that's cultural around town. That's a moat you can't get across. And we have to end that. And you've got to stop the traffic and maybe, you know, get the Hawk system or put up a traffic signal at Houston. You know, this is our town, and it's I-DOT's road, and they're dictating to us, and I know we have to take their dictation. But, you know, we've got to try to push back for our town also. So, that's, I guess, my thought on that.
So, I'm going to jump on, to tag up on Mike there, and then I'm also going to jump over and tag up on Alan on his thought of have a plan and then figure out how you're going to finance it if you're going to do it. So, I'm going to jump even a step further and go back to probably 12 years ago when we did the original Streetscape framework plan and designated Batavia Avenue as, I think, neighborhood number four. And I'm going to tell you, if you want to slow down the traffic and you want to make a drastic change to make things safer, turn Batavia Avenue into a Streetscape project. And that's going to solve all your problems. Now, how you're going to pay for it? I don't know. But that would be the plan that Alan's talking about, and that would be the solution.
It wasn't 12 years ago. I've only been on the council seven.
Time flies by. Maybe it was 10. I don't know. How long ago was it?
About seven or eight years ago.
I think it was in 2004.
It was right after I got on the council. 2004 sounds right. That's just an idea, but Gary needs some direction. Yeah, we need direction to give to Gary. And I think, you know, from my standpoint, and I think what we've talked about tonight is, we want the request for proposals for whether it's the Hawk or a traffic signal at McKee for a crossing. We're waiting for I-DOT to come back for an answer on Houston for just the basic signed and striped crosswalk. And then the traffic study, we can twist the mayor's arm and have him write that for the speed on it. I think we have to go for everything we can find on it. You know, whatever we can do to slow traffic down and get people to realize that they have to allow pedestrians to cross, we have to do it. I mean, I think back to when we started the Streetscape project in Wilson Street and the bridge got done, and we had these new crosswalks mid-block on the east side, nobody stopped to let you cross over there. Now, if you go down there on a Saturday and there's 1,000 people that are ready to go to the farmer's market, people stop continually to let people across, because they understand how they work. And I think that's the other problem I see with what we've done on 31. People still have not become accustomed to what they're there for. And it's going to take time for people to learn that.
Gary, what do you think that consulting fee would be to do that? A guesstimate?
I don't know. I'm not even going to give you a guesstimate. Honestly, I don't know.
I'm going to guess and say you're not going to find anything for less than $30,000, right?
No, it's going to be in that magnitude, at least.
Right. So, I'm going to, again, I'm just, Mike gets on his rampage about drainage, I'll get on my rampage about Streetscape. For $30,000, we could hire a Streetscape consultant to come in here and help us plan what to do on Batavia Avenue, which would incorporate what you're talking about. Instead of doing this little piece now and this little piece later, if you're going to make a plan, make a plan.
No, I think, in my mind, these things are, I don't know that Streetscape would extend all the way to McKee Street unless we were to do a road diet, really rechain, you know...
And if we wanted to.
I'd be hoping to see and reprogram the road. I think at this point, we need to see if those possibilities are there for...
I don't want to spend any amount of money on a consultant. It isn't going to go anywhere. We've been doing that a lot lately.
That would be my fear, and we already know with the Sams Club closing that, you know, we're operating at a potential deficit this year. And the study that we would be undertaking would be talking about plans about how much more money that we would be spending on the plans that we would come up with, with this study. So, I just want to take that into account.
Maybe we should chew on that for a little bit, but in the meantime, just give...
It's Mary.
Mary.
In the meantime, just give Gary direction on what to do with the immediate situation that he's got.
Well, the one that doesn't cost us anything with a stamp is the mayor to write the letter and send it downstate. I think that needs to get done, and...
But he also needs to, we can't leave that signal up there in the condition it's in. He's asking...
Well, it's ours.
You already took it down.
You took the other one down, too?
Yeah, they're already down.
It's just a matter of, and maybe we already have, frankly, I haven't driven up there today to put up just standard signage at this point.
Okay, well, I think that that needs to be done.
That's a minimal cost. It's no cost, so.
Okay.
The other was the consultant who was going to conduct the study on whether to install a Hawk signal or a traffic signal. Is that something we still want to pursue, a request for proposals on that study?
I'd say yes.
Yeah, I think we need to know what it would cost to do that.
I think I want to know how much the consultants is going to cost before we agree. We should put out a request for proposal and find out how much that's going to cost.
That's the question, the RFP. Yes.
Okay, send the RFP out.
Yeah, if it's consensus, we certainly can send out an RFP. That doesn't cost us anything except some staff time. And then you guys do not have to be obligated to go forward with that.
Right.
The other major item out of the 13th last discussion was the notion of the other rapid flashing beacons throughout town, whether those should or should not remain in place. The attorney did render an opinion on that, and if you've read it, basically it says that per the FHWA guidelines, they are allowed to remain in place for as long as their useful life remains. That's not an obligation. So, if the city were to desire to take them out, the city could desire to take them out. And that's really kind of your decision.
I personally think, I mean, I know the ones on Hart Road and on Redan work great. And I think, and again, I think it's the typography of the road, it's how open it is. I've ridden through there. They work exactly like they're supposed to. As far as the ones over, I think it's on Morton.
We have some on Route 25 also, or South River Street in Washington.
Right, right. But the ones further down on Batavia Avenue, those are, in terms, I've seen people almost get hit there. And I think that's as much to do with the four-lane road as is anything, you know. But the ones down on Hart, Hart and Redan work, they work great.
Well, I for one, I'm not ready to throw away something that people have to learn to use. They have to learn to stop when they're activated. And, you know, I mean, I've seen a few close calls, I've seen people, you know, run out in front of them. I've also been on the two-lane streets and seen people that, you know, car stopped in one way and the car going the other way doesn't stop. So, you know, I mean, we can't legislate against somebody's inability to follow the rules.
That was it, that's it.
Oh, yeah, we can. We give those people tickets.
I could add one, please.
Sure.
That's the problem with the way the law's written, because under certain circumstances, that's not a violation of the law. So, until that pedestrian enters that side of the lane of traffic, those vehicles can proceed. And what Gary's talking about in other states about how when they come to the mouth of the intersection, people are stopping before they even enter the intersection, that is not the law in the state of Illinois. So, it's not illegal. The pedestrian has to be in the intersection before the cars have to stop or have made an attempt to step into the intersection. So, it's, the law's fairly ambiguous in that regard. So, it's not as easy as it may seem to write a ticket.
So, this is another reason for us to go downstate. Add that to the list of the other 27 things we need to get them to change.
So, chief, I got to ask you, I mean, just like Susan asked the guy with the garage here a little while ago, if he could have what he really wanted, what would it be? In this case, what do you think we should do?
Well, I think we had discussed that previously. The major concern for us is the four-lane roads and the inside-to-outside lane conflicts and the vehicles in the inside lanes on the approach and on the egress on the way out, it's the outside lane where there's lack of visibility. So, the car that initially sees the vehicle blocks the view of the vehicle to the inside or to the outside as that pedestrian proceeds through the four-lane. That's the biggest problem with these systems. That's why when we went back and put our heads together and tried to determine some solutions, what we had on hand, we were talking about the overhead mast arms. So, increasing visibility through lighting the intersection in the evenings and the additional rapid flashing beacons overhead, so the inside lane could see that the beacon had been activated. So, that was a concern for us. We thought that would mitigate that. The two-lane roads, they've been, they've been great. I think they've greatly increased visibility, awareness of pedestrians and safety for the pedestrians. Just a, you know, simple matter of the four-lane conflict on the major state road that we're concerned about, and particularly as it pertains to McKee Street, because that's a major arterial intersection. So, I've had concerns about that all along, ever since they went in. My recollection of the Houston Street situation is a little bit different. My recollection of that was initially, they were talking about putting the rapid flashing beacon at the Houston Street intersection, and I-DOT told us no. Am I incorrect about that?
That's correct.
That's correct. It's too close to the stoplight.
So, and then the next, I guess, evolution of that was to put the crosswalk at Houston Street without the rapid flashing beacon, and then to put a pedestrian island at the northern edge of the intersection, because that's where the bike path was going to go, the bike trail, the north, handrail the northern edge of Houston Street. It was determined the mouth of that intersection at the northern leg was too narrow, so they wanted to move that pork shop south. Well, that didn't make any sense to us, because the pedestrian would actually literally have to cross through the intersection two times to get on that pedestrian island from the bike route and then back across the intersection again to get to the eastern edge of the bike path on the other side of Route 31. So, that was a concern we had with that. Honestly, I would have liked to have seen a pedestrian raised median at the northern edge of that intersection, but I-DOT said that was not feasible.
So, for what we've got out there now, and what Gary's asking for, what do you want us to do? Leave, leave the one down, leave all the existing ones there, but pursue with I-DOT the opportunity to put the overhead mast arm up, is what you're saying would be your preference?
For the Hawk.
Correct. If I'm wrong about, you're talking about the rapid flashing beacons, reinstall and put overhead mast arms? I don't think that's an option.
No, the one down farther on...
Well, you got Union and...
Union.
Union and Morton. Enhancing those with overhead mast arms and additional flashers is not going to be an option.
Yeah, that's not allowable anymore either, you know, in accordance with their memorandum. So, I guess, if you're asking me what I'd rather see, I have grave concerns about the McKee Street intersection with the rapid flashing beacon or not. Yes, I'd much rather see an unmarked, or I'm sorry, marked, unlighted pedestrian crossing at Houston Street. The reality of it is, there's no, we have no problems in Houston Street right now, because the pedestrians that are crossing there wait for there to be no traffic before they cross. I know when we were having this discussion, one of the bones of contention was that we're going to increase safety at Houston Street if we put these things in. And our data didn't flesh that out, because to, you know, a scrub of our records indicated we hadn't had any pedestrian accidents at that intersection. So, I don't know how we could have increased safety at that point. But I am concerned about the McKee Street intersection. So, given those two options, yes, I would prefer that to be moved to Houston Street as opposed to McKee Street. There's just too many driver actions occurring at that intersection.
Okay. So, I think we are concluded. I think you know where...
I think our direction is to not take any action regarding the existing ones and do a RFP for a consultant for McKee Street.
I think I'm done, Dave.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. We're going to go on then to item 11, which is the discussion on the wastewater treatment facility improvements. Alma Bryant?
Yeah, we, with the present construction at the wastewater treatment facility, there's been, I guess, some complaints about smell and the, so staff is kind of asking for authorization to proceed with implementing some temporary odor control measures at a cost of, I believe, not to exceed $30,000.
Well, it's gonna be in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range.
Oh, so it went up a bit.
It's always within the low thirties.
Well, you know what? Yeah, I have it here at thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's why I said thirty to forty in my memo. Um, staff feels that while this is minor compared to the overall project cost, it still is forty thousand dollars. And we at least wanted to come back to you before, before doing it. Um, it's not going to eliminate every odor, so I don't want to install it in the next week, have an odor issue, and then be standing before you to try and explain why we still have an odor issue. Um, but we're trying to get the most obvious source and, and, and try and mitigate the most obvious and, and kind of pungent source. Um, I think we maybe relayed the story that even on one of the days where an odor was noticed downtown, we had a staff member come in and went to our treatment plant and, and it wasn't coming from the treatment plant. So, um, we do have a natural river running through downtown, which sometimes Mother Nature produces odors. So this system, uh, we are recommending, we'd like to go forward with it because we think that we can do a good job of mitigating a vast majority of kind of the worst odors that are coming out of the plant during this construction phase. And we just wanted to see if council was on board with that, uh, to allow us to, to proceed with this.
Any questions?
Yeah, how bad is it?
Comments?
I'm sorry?
How bad is it?
Ask Scott Salvati.
I mean, I'm, I'm, as, I'm asking because...
It can be bad.
I've noticed it once.
Yeah.
And to me, that's not enough to spend forty thousand dollars.
Yeah. I, I mean, and I, I think that's, it's a legit point. I mean, I work a hundred yards north of there. And depending on the day, you know, I mean, it, it can be, it can be horrible. Um, I'm struggling spending forty thousand dollars on it though, you know, and, and given, given that remedy is within four or five months.
Right.
Um, and, 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 I mean, I'll hold my nose. I, I'm, you know, it's, it's unpleasant, but in, in a time where we're trying to save dollars...
And we felt the same way, right up to the point where those next four or five months are spring and summer.
I know.
Where we have people downtown...
And we're looking to bring people downtown, and we don't want people walking out of our downtown saying it stinks. So how, we would pay for this via change order?
This would be done through the wastewater project itself, yeah. So it would go as, as a change order, uh, uh, allowance, however, whoever they allocate it to the project.
Right.
Yeah. That's really the big factor.
That, that really is.
Coming right into spring and summer.
Yeah.
And that there might be people who are first-time visitors...
Yeah.
To the city of Batavia to attend an event or go to a certain place of business, and they might never return if they think that that's...
That's true.
The standard smell of our downtown, and our downtown businesses will be affected by the construction at One Washington Place as well. And so this is something that might compound the effect on their businesses. Um, and I, I'm just putting those facts out there. It is a, a large amount of money to spend. Trotter and Associates said they successfully used this, um, mechanism in St. Charles when they were, uh, refurbishing some of their digesters. So it's a proven method.
So Gary, could you firm the timeline up a little bit? You say it's four or five months before we won't need this? Is that four months or five months?
I mean, Jerry was here.
Yeah.
It's, it's the end of the summer, I think, is basically what he's, what we've been saying.
You probably know where I'm going with this because if it's four months, and then the next question is, how long is it gonna take to implement this and get it in where it's working? And if that takes up to a month, now are we gonna spend forty thousand dollars for three months of no smell?
Well, I think Jerry, I, I, again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think the last thing he was before council, he would, he had thrown out a timeframe in that September range. I think that that's kind of what he had, he had taught. So pretty much the whole summer. If I recall, that was his last, his last statement.
My recollection is.
This is, and just so you know, this is, this is getting, uh, exhaust into a tank, if you will. Tank is filled with a media. So that, so the media, sort of like a charcoal filter, if I'm trying to use the best kind of, so the exhaust goes into a tank, tank is filled with a media, media, charcoal filter takes out the odors, and then, and then the gases go out of the tank, you know, smelling, smell free. So that's, that's essentially, it's very rudimentary, but it's also very effective. We're working with, you know, odor control consultant who has done this, and, and as, as Laura said, Trotter's actually done this similar, very similar thing up in St. Charles, so.
Yeah, I think the...
Nothing extremely complicated as far as implementation, though.
I think the potential loss revenue to the city, to the businesses, would way exceed forty thousand dollars.
Probably.
In my business, one customer not, that decides not to come back, I mean, that's five thousand dollars in a year. One customer. So, I mean, I think it's well worth forty thousand dollars to, to avoid somebody just not, a, a bunch of people and word spreading because there's this, there's social media that some of us have seen. It doesn't take long.
Well, I think it's money well spent. I mean, it's gonna be taken out of the construction pot.
Come out of the wastewater enterprise.
You know, and so, I mean, it's not a lot of money. We spend a lot of money on change orders for the construction, you know, for unforeseen conditions. We can just label this an unforeseen condition.
Mike, I, I agree. I'm not gonna support it because every time we turn around now, we're looking at thirty thousand for this, forty thousand for that, you know, maybe a consultant for this, maybe this, maybe that. But yet, we can't hire a police officer that we know we need.
Okay. Anyone else?
What, why is this not standard procedure? Why didn't, why didn't the project come with this? Because I don't see myself removing this benefit. I would have approved it had, it been part of the original package.
Um, I don't know if I can fairly answer that question for, for Trotter. I, I, I will stand up for Trotter though and say that we're, um, quite a ways into the project. And I think the last time we showed you the total value of change orders, it's less than one percent. So I mean, they...
Right.
They have, they have been very good at identifying issues throughout the project. And, um...
I'm just saying, I would have voted for a project that included this.
Yeah.
We need to pay for it.
And especially if they use that type of odor control in St. Charles, knowing that they had issues, they know that this one is a block away from our downtown, you know, we knew you were gonna have issues with it at some point.
But if they would have, if they would have put it into the budget then, into, into the cost of it, it's, you would have approved it. Well, they're putting it in now, it's still the same cost. And so you, it's just, you're getting what you pay for, you know? And so, so I don't know. So I guess if we don't, we don't pay for it, we have smells in our downtown and, and...
And we may still. I mean, I'm gonna...
We may still, no, absolutely, but they'll definitely be mitigated a great deal.
At least we can, we can say to ourselves, we've done the steps that we can do to mitigate.
Right. Does anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Chancet, second by Wolf. Oh, well, I mean, we're just giving direction anyway. There's really not a vote, so. Well, do we take a, we'll just take a vote. Okay, we'll take, we'll tally a vote.
Vote call.
Vote call. Thank you.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan absent. Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
A-Tech absent. Andstark?
No.
Nine to three.
Good. Okay, direction.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, now we're gonna go on to item number thirteen, presentation from the department heads. And we'll turn this over to Laura.
Yes, I'll just, uh, do a brief introduction to say that, um, this is an annual report following the mid-year reports that we did back in July. This is an opportunity for you to see the accomplishments of each of the departments in the 2017 calendar year as well as their, uh, plans for the 2018 calendar year. And I've also asked them to identify any, um, potential challenges or opportunities that they, they see in the coming year. So we're starting off with, um, Howard. Howard, if you go up to View and select full screen, you'll be able to advance slide by slide.
Where's full screen?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
Beautiful. Hi, I'm your opening act. So, yeah, don't forget to tip the weight staff. Just starting out, I wanted to, um, just go over kind of our goals and objectives. Um, they haven't really changed from the last time, but, uh, you know, we try and manage all aspects of, uh, technology projects, um, on GIS, uh, or geographic information systems throughout the city. We try and help all departments with implementation, um, security, um, managing backups, so forth. Um, we always like to recommend, um, effective solutions that they need to, uh, serve the public. Uh, we also work with departments on their processes. We, we definitely want to help them, um, where we see fit to improve a process using technology. Um, anything that makes their life simpler and, and allows the residents to get better service. Um, and if we can help them identify, um, how to do that using technology, that's, that's one of, one of the things we like to help them with. Um, provide training, assist employees with support from, um, on a daily basis. And probably the, the most important thing we do is, uh, try and keep our data secure and our systems reliable. Um, GIS has been doing a lot of work, I know, uh, with a lot of departments, uh, putting together analysis, um, bringing information together, uh, showing maps and data. Um, I know that, uh, he's been working with the fire department, the police department. Um, he's been, uh, Mike has had a big hand in the View Works project, so he gets, he gets a lot of, uh, exposure to a lot of the things that we do. So definitely valuable. Um, as we move on, I just wanted to touch on some of the projects that I thought you guys might be interested in. There's a lot of other things that we do. Um, but, uh, I know, uh, that there's certain things that are more public facing, and that's what I'm trying to focus on this evening. Uh, so this is, these are some of the projects that we finished probably the last third of the year in 2017. Uh, Mike, uh, in GIS does a lot of updates to different maps on the internet for departments. Uh, one of them was the, uh, the ward map. I, I believe he does that every year or so. Uh, he has been working creating the census boundaries for the next census that's coming up in a couple of years. Um, he's, uh, does some work with utilities, uh, when we want to audit and see where, where are utilities and how are they getting taxed throughout town. Um, he has created a service, uh, within our View Works system that moves data back and forth from GIS to View Works. So people can update one system, see it in the other. The, I did send out something in one of the newsletters about the public works cabling. Huge improvement from a big spaghetti mess to a very organized, um, efficient system. Better speed, more reliability. Um, the guys there did a great job, so, um, we're very happy that that's accomplished. Um, we have been updating our antivirus programs, our firewall, um, uh, policies and firmware. And we're also looking at kicking off a, um, uh, security awareness training program. We're trying to finalize that now and following up on that. Um, we did do some of it last year. It's an ongoing process. Uh, some of you get, uh, funny emails once in a while telling you that your Amazon count is overdue or something. And I know some of you have sent me emails, hey, Howard, what is this? That's our test. So if you see those come in, um, you know, hopefully you're not clicking on the links. Feel free to ask me if you're not sure, but that's where some, we, we actually hire a company to send those out to people. So, um, where am I? Uh, we are working with wastewater, uh, not only to design or help architect their SCADA system, but also their cabling, security, uh, which is, I believe, being close to built now. Um, we did help train the Tricom IT manager. Todd went out there for a couple of days, worked with him. Trying to go through this quickly, um, but, uh, let me get to the next slide here. And I believe we're gonna take questions at the end. Um, asset management, um, which is a View Works system. Uh, we're in process now of working on the conversion for the electric data. Uh, part of that involved making some changes with GIS. Um, we started looking at the service requests program, and coming up, it probably sometime this summer is going to be the, um, uh, service requests work order program that's going to be mobile in the field. Uh, we're working with the Davenport Group who does our permitting system, our LAMA system. Um, we're hoping to go live, we should go live this month in March, uh, with online permits. I know we're gonna try and walk rather than run at first, so we are going to limit what types of permits, um, just to get the system up and running. Um, we're updating phones. We are, uh, doing some server upgrades, PCs, laptops. Uh, pending projects, we're looking at an email archiving system, which was, was scheduled for 2017. We're doing that 2018. We are going to be re-cabling the city hall this year, and we are starting to look at some big upgrades for Microsoft. Um, further down the list and future considerations, the city council AV, uh, project. It, it says that it's canceled, but I believe it's tabled for now. Um, we'll see what happens with the budget more towards the, the middle of the year. Um, we're looking at possibly, uh, upgrading of the finance system a little bit so it'll work with more open, um, browsers. And, uh, I believe we move the HRIS system in 2019. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna briefly present, uh, the 2017 economic developments and redevelopments that occurred, um, 2018 economic development priorities that we have, and then talk briefly on strengths and weaknesses, uh, in our economic development plan moving forward. Uh, most of my slides are graphics, so we should be able to get through them pretty quickly. In terms of downtown redevelopments, obviously the prominent ones are along North River Street, and we're moving along with them. Uh, the process for One Washington Place continues. It did recently get approval for the design at HPC, and it, the redesign is pending PC and council consideration. As you know, we built the large Schindbecker parking lot to completion last year. In terms of other redevelopments on private properties, uh, we've seen quite a bit of redevelopment, not just in seventeen, but coming in in eighteen on South Batavia Avenue. We're very happy about that. There's really only one vacant space now with respect to new project development, and that's the old podiatry, uh, office, and that just recently became vacant. But if you haven't been in the Batavia dental, uh, family dental at one oh nine, that's a real cool building. That's the interior reception area as you go in. He's got five operatories in there. Uh, he really likes to build. He's put a lot of investment into that, that particular space. Obviously, Dunkin' Donuts on North Batavia Avenue, Salsa Verde right across the street, and Hot Pan Noodles and Dumplings filled a large space that was, uh, formerly the vacant Fantasticos. Further, we've, uh, seen Brianna's open this year, very successful restaurant. Uh, you see the outside of it, and then a picture that was taken by the owner during lunch. And that's a typical scene if you've been in there, anytime between, say, nine and noon or nine and one o'clock. A lot of people eating in there. Also, I wanted to show you what happened at the thirty South Someway Building, the old city hall. You know, that's been vacant for, oh, going on more than twenty-four months. Uh, Joe Hill, who did our, our video, our global video, and his son, who owns a company called Overtake Digital, have taken over the entire first floor in Mezzanine. And I'm sorry, those pictures don't, aren't so easily seen under this light, but it's an extraordinary, um, redevelopment and interior remodeling job. Uh, turning the west side now, in this last year, uh, Crest Champions is now open. Uh, there's the building on the left and the interior reception area on the right. Uh, as you know, uh, over in the same shopping center at Fabian and Randall, Sierra Trading Post is due to open March seventeenth, and Dollar Tree soon thereafter. So that filled up about eighteen thousand square feet of the Circuit City, thirty-three thousand, and Dollar Tree took the old eleven thousand square feet of Doffus Depot. So we have the intervening space that the brokers are working hard to fill. In terms of east side development, uh, twelve fifty Douglas, which is a large spec building, was completed, uh, this last year, and they just had their first tenant sign a lease, uh, for fifty thousand square feet there. Nine oh one Douglas, uh, that building has been approved with respect to the design, but they have not begun construction. That has also been proposed as a spec building, and construction will begin once they, uh, either have a, a known occupant, uh, to build the suit for the whole building or, uh, significant tenant space to be rented. You know what? The Sun Care three hundred thousand square foot addition. So all these occurred, uh, in our northeast business park. Uh, going to 2018 developments, uh, one, this is some of the activity I was telling you about on South Batavia, the old Stash's Barber Shop, and the city helped on this project, uh, in a grant approval. Uh, but, uh, John Hamel, local carpenter and artist, actually, he's rebuilding that building, gutted it completely. That's the ground floor. Ken, the picture doesn't do justice. The work inside has been phenomenal with respect to preserving, uh, the stone face, uh, interior facade. Uh, he's building out rooms right there. His wife will be putting in a art therapy studio there. Uh, excited about that business, real destination type oriented businesses. She... She believes that she'll be bringing in clients from, you know, an hour's, hour's drive time. He's also rebuilding the apartments upstairs. 107 East Wilson, that just recently changed hands, Michael Marconi bought that. We're trying to prioritize the rehab and reoccupancy of that building. As you know, the Tomley Building, we, I'm not going to give any detail about that, I'll update you either next week or the following as to the RFP process, but that's on our target list this, this year. Across from the One Washington Place, that's the old Marathon Station. The developer did, owner and developer did manage to get all the tanks, get the environmental cleanup done, and demolish all the buildings on site, and we're hoping that this year they present a proposal for redevelopment. We've seen something at the staff level, but it's not ready to go forward with the council at this point. And 115 South Batavia Avenue, that's going to be a new salon, I believe it's Sydney Fink Salon, and that's being rehabbed now as we speak, and of course, the question in 2018, we hope, is One Washington Place. Turning to West Side, 2018 development priorities, some of the new projects that have occurred and will be opening this year. Furniture Frenzy is a 7,000 square foot space just south of, I'm a furniture store, that's a new business that's filling space in a, one of the strip centers out in Randall. You know about Brio Pareja, that is a new restaurant taking over the old White Castle, and that improvement's being done as we speak. And just in case you haven't heard, Bob Hanson did close on the old Golden Corral property, Bob Hanson of Funway fame, he is leasing the entire building to Pal Joey's for their relocation. In terms of the West Town Tift District, we mentioned the dual property, that northerly piece, that white kind of polygon, that's dual, dual and ma, and master cast piece, so we're prioritizing that. Hopefully this 2018, we'll see something happening there. Of course, the stretch along Main Street, that's shown in the middle, that includes the, the old Vandy property, it includes, the school is, the school district has taken over that one manufacturing building, and they reoccupied it and they put money into it, and that's, you know, that's a good thing. And then, of course, you've got the old gas station site owned by Pedersen. And then finally, in the West Town District, you've also got the property along Walnut, that's the approximate three acre piece that's designated for multifamily, or at least higher density housing. We're open to see something this year on that. In terms of East Side target sites, we want to first look at trying to fill existing building space. 601 Kingsland, that's the old Party Light, that's 500,000 square feet. The Rubicon Building at 950 at the corner there, at Douglas, southeast corner of Douglas and Redant. 1300 South River, that's the Amcor Building, and 1250 Douglas, that's the building I showed you previously, that is just new construction, but would like to fill out that space. Soon as you fill out the spaces of these new buildings especially, the more likely you're going to be having new buildings being constructed from ground up on the vacant parcels. So speaking of vacant parcels, this just focuses on the East Side parcels, essentially the industrial parcels. You'll note that the only two parcels of any real consequence in terms of size are up at Kirk and Fabian numbers five and six. Five is a Joe Keim property, that's about 40 acres, and six is actually the Aldi piece. Not that we expect that to be either sold or developed anytime soon, but the reason I present them there is they, because they make a stark comparison with what the other parcels are in size. There's 12 parcels shown here. In fact, the Nagel property, I'm the very first one on the number one that you discussed the rezoning today. We hope that will result in, you know, an expansion of, of the buildings that are there now, but in either case, one of the characteristics of these parcels are, they're small. I mean, they're five, six, 10, 12 acres, and then that can be limiting in some cases when you want to build a large building. So going into the strengths influencing economic development going forward, in terms of local strengths, there's been some momentum in new business starts and land development and redevelopment, that's for certain. We have a lot of proposed new residential developments in and surrounding Batavia. That will certainly have a major impact on our buying power, and especially rooftops equal more commercial activity. Batavia presently has decent inventory of large, 100-plus thousand square foot buildings, some of which I showed you, and that's a good thing, both existing and proposed. And Batavia obviously owns and operates its own utility systems, and we have sufficient, in fact, more than adequate capacity for expansion. In terms of regional dynamics, there is a high demand for, and there's a lot of good absorption of industrial buildings, especially buildings that serve the logistics industry. That's the hottest market in the industry right now, is building warehouse and distribution type buildings, and especially true nationally, but especially so in the Chicagoland area, which is such a critical regional, super regional hub. And there is some taste on the part of the president and Congress for funding infrastructure. Weaknesses on the local side of it, our electric rates remain comparatively high across Chicagoland. Downtown economic viability is constrained by the single bridge over the Fox River. None of this is new to you, but just mentioning it, and we have a limited number of large vacant parcels, as I discussed a minute ago. Retail vacancy continuing to increase nationally, and Chicagoland is one of the hardest hit metro areas. We're losing population, therefore, consumer demand doesn't bode well for filling spaces like Sam's Club and building on the former Avenue Chevrolet property, but we have seen some progress in filling existing spaces, as I discussed a minute ago. Fact is, and literature is replete with this information, for some reason, across the country, we overbuilt retail commercial space in a significant way in the last 20 years, and that's coming to haunt us, especially in light of, of all the e-trade. Another weakness on the national scale is interest rates have risen slightly, and they expect to continue to rise, and that's also true in the bond market pricing, and that could be, make things difficult for the city and for private developers. And the, I wrote this, you know, a couple of weeks ago anyways, and so at that time it was just simple prospects of it, of the aluminum and steel tariffs. We don't have any smelting facilities, obviously, so it's not like it's going to affect our employment, we don't produce steel and aluminum, but we do have manufacturers, and we also have warehousing distribution facilities where we're affected by production and manufacturing. I don't want to get into a political story on this, but there are obviously a lot of economists that feel that these tariffs that are being proposed may affect our manufacturing and our job creation altogether. Just the last two slides in terms of economic development goals going forward, we do want to put together a more formalized recruitment plan, identifying target business types, particularly where... This happens from time to time.
I see you've exceeded your time allotment.
I guess so. She told me she was going to play music. Okay, that's it. So anyhow, so we want to look at, first of all, target industries that we're already doing well at, you know, go with your winners, and also look where we have leakage, known leakage, and we think we definitely have a hospitality industry. Retention and expansion plans, we want to visit more businesses, whether by phone or by physical visits of the plants. We'd like to run another survey, not the complexity that was done four or five years ago, but just to gauge our relative business friendly atmosphere. It's not moving, there should be one more slide.
Should be a lot more slides.
Well, yeah, but you know, in my own self-serving way, I want to, I want to get down. Bullstar marketing plan, enhance socioeconomic and real estate debt on our webpage, and that's moving along with the help of both Chris Cudworth and Howard's team, of course, better navigation through the pages, continue to buy more media, ads and advertorials in these trade magazines you see listed, and finally finalize in distributed marketing video. The reason it has not been finalized, because a key part of the, someplace in the middle of it, we talk about One Washington Place, and we'd like to be able to keep that in there, but until we know where the project's there, we don't want to get it out altogether. You know, work with these business oriented, not, not for non-government organizations like the Chamber of Main Street, Fox Valley Workforce Investment Board, this new Chicago Regional Growth Corporation that the county has helped put together, and Family Valley Industrial Association. And then, of course, encourage the development of business friendly policies and public improvements, both with the private sector and internally. One of the things that, that I like to consider, like to think that I spend quite a bit of time on and effort is, is working with the rest of the staff and advocating business development during staff meetings, during our initial discussions with the, the prospect of business or developer, and I think we've got a good team together here on that, so thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Wendy.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to start off with real briefly, kind of at a high level, taking a look at what I've identified, just a few strengths and challenges specifically in an employee or HR environment. First and foremost, I think we have a very stable workforce, I think as a city. We have a great, very good group of employees that are committed and are, are here every day, as well as good employee relations. We have six unions, which one of the things I'll talk about, I've been busy with very much lately, but at the same time, we have great relations with them. You know, we've not had to go to arbitration in a very long time, we have very low, if not no grievances, so, and then even with our non-union group, continue to open good employee relations. Our retention, and there's low turnover, I'll talk about those numbers in just a few minutes. Some of the things I see as challenges within the city or within the HR department, in general, our HR department, many of our processes, processes are very paper and labor intensive. Many of the things that we do in HR at this point are either done on an Excel spreadsheet or done manually, or you're, I'm counting pieces of paper, so as you can imagine, with the staff of, there's two and a half of us, that can take a lot of time at times. Union negotiations are still very quickly, within the next few weeks, I'll be coming to you guys through executive session and then also through the council for approval, so we're, we're very quickly wrapping up those, but then with that, with some changes in our economics, we'll be looking into sitting down and talking with them very soon again in 2018, and we'll talk, I can talk more about that in the coming weeks. And then one of the other things is a kind of a double edged sword, is that we have a very stable workforce, but additionally, we have a very many, significant part of our workforce is tenured. So when you look at the possibility of having retirements and people getting ready to kind of move on to that next chapter of their life, over the next five years, I think we'll see a, a big, we've seen some in the last few years as well, but we'll continue to see more. And we're also seeing that as well as, I think, some people that may be held off because of the economy are now kind of saying, hey, now's my time, I can do that. So we'll be seeing a lot of that and really talk, I've been, you know, talking in each one of the departments about the succession planning of that, as well as just, you know, that kind of knowledge drain, institutional knowledge drain that you have when you have a large group of people leave. Future and ongoing projects, currently, right now, we're still working with, through IPBC, they provide a benefits portal called Benefit Solver. We've been working on making, which is going to make it a complete paperless, open enrollment benefits portal. So currently, right now, where we are, it's a little bit slower than we had hoped, but we hit some bumps along the way, but we're internally, administratively, doing all of our enrollments through one system versus going out to all four, all four of our benefit systems, and it's, then it pushes that information. And my hope is, is initially, we thought spring, but it looks like summer, they had some glitches on their end. Hopefully by summer, the employees will begin to be able to see their information. And then by fall, they'll actually be able to do open enrollment through there. So it, it's exciting, but also challenging, as you can imagine, a complete change for the city of Batavia, where we've always done paper processes, so this will be a different thing for us. The HRIS system, we, this year, while we would not be looking at any sort of budget until into 2019, but I'm putting together an RFP to see what's out there and take a look at what kind of systems are available and what would work for us. Talking about those, many of the processes that we still do paper wise, that kind of manage that. The employee personnel manual, my hope is, is to, once I get through the negotiations, which hopefully are winding up, is to be able to bring some beginning review of the personnel manual to the city council and get some updates, and then have it approved and ready to, by the end of 2018, of course, to the employees. Talked a little bit about wellness initiatives, getting that wellness committee, I've actually been talking about that for a year, it's just unfortunately, it kind of gets moved down on that list, but really getting that employee involvement through the wellness committee, and then additionally increased participation with our biometric screenings. We've already seen that it's been a positive cost return or cost reduction for us, so we want to continue to do that. And then the union negotiations, all six of them are wrapping up very quickly, like I said, we'll be bringing them, but many of them will be sitting back down at the table with them again late fall. Some of the accomplishments, we talked about some of these mid-years, I'll just quickly go through. The employee Intranet was updated and continues to be updated. We're still doing the, most of the benefits transition with our life insurance, flexible spending, medical, dental, that's all been completed, and we've had a full year under our belt. Employee events for this past year, we had an employee appreciation breakfast, the picnic and the holiday luncheon. And then under the recruitment, where we ended up at the end of the year, we hired 31 employees, which can, includes conducting orientation and onboarding, and just within the HR department only, as you can imagine, there are many other departments, police and fire are doing their own recruitment, but just in the HR department alone, we conducted 104 interviews. So I had put together, kind of taking a look at what possibly in the future, what might be of interest to the city council in regards to a KPI or a metric, and I was able to collect some data that I had for 2017, but some of the things that we were looking at is under recruitment, would really be letting you guys know the number of job postings, which I talked about as far as what we've had, and the number of employment applications. Currently, right now, we have a system that's all manual, but I still think that's important to understand what our reach is and kind of who's applying, and where are, are we really getting a good, a good group of employ, or applicants. Under workers comp, taking a look at the number of workers comp claims on an annual basis, and then additionally, just to kind of be aware of the number of active claims. So active claims include any claim that's in litigation, so that can go back several years. And then the total annual cost incurred. And under, then turnover, talking about what the number of new hires are, as well as the number of terminations, and then under employee relations, if there's any union contracts that are settled within a particular year, and the grievances. Just quickly, on the right side is, you can see in 2007, under workers comp, we did have 15 OSHA recordable injuries, that actually was down a bit from the year before, but we currently still do have 24 open claims, and that's all years, but those are claims that are regularly managing through, going before an arbitrator or managing because they're in litigation of some sort. In 2007, keep in mind, some, a few of those 2007 claims are still open, but at the close of the year, we had a, including all medical and legal expenses, a cost of $86,456,48. And then under turnover, we had 31 new hires, 29 terminations. Overall turnover for the city as a whole was 12%. And what I did when I say regular workforce is, I took out the numbers, as you, as you can imagine, the POCs, there's a group that's pretty revolving, and also looked at seasonal employees and interns, and took that number out, and said, okay, of our regular workforce positions that we would replace, last year we saw a turnover of 6%. And I think that's it.
Evening. I'm going to give you a brief snapshot of our more comprehensive annual report that we're putting the finishing touches on right now, should be in your hands in the next couple of weeks, and then I'll give you a couple of graphs and charts to kind of drill down on some of the interesting points. All right, here is a roll-up of our operations division productivity statistics, 2016 versus 2017, just to give you a comparison. The next slide will be a little more illustrative of some of the reductions in the productivity statistics. We're down a little bit, call for service totals, that includes 911 calls to police as well as self-initiated field activity, down about 4% this year. As you'll see in the next slide, we've had, we did lose three officers last year, two of those were placed by conventional hires, meaning they were, no law enforcement certification prior to, we had to train them from schoolhouse to their first call, which takes about nine months. Additional to that, we, we hired a third officer who was previously certified, and then shortly after we hired him, he went on deployment to Puerto Rico at the Illinois National Guard, so we lost that productivity there. Crash reports, on the other, other hand, were down about 11% last year, which is good, but as you'll see in a later slide, our injury accidents were back up. We had a kind of anomalous year in 2016 where we had a significant reduction in traffic crashes with injuries, but they kind of went back up this year, but overall, traffic crash... which is good, but as you'll see in a later slide, our injury accidents were back up. We had a kind of anomalous year in 2016, where we had a significant reduction in traffic crashes with injuries, but they kind of went back up this year. But overall, traffic crashes were down. Case reports, a little bit down. Our traffic stops, although, are, are down a little bit this year, based on loss of manpower, our citation issuance is up. I'll show you in some of the later slides that we've been, you know, I guess spending time with more targeted directed enforcement than just blanket coverage. And I'll show you the, the trend lines there over a five or six-year span. Civil citations is another thing of note from last year to this year. That is the civil cannabis ordinance and state law that changed in 2017 and 2016, it was against the law in an arrestable offense, now it is a, an ordinance for a state citation offense. So we issued twenty-nine of those last year. Total arrests were down, although I think that's indicative, part and parcel with the loss of manpower temporarily. And DUI arrests were down, and I, we think that was related as well to some problems we've been negotiating through with the changes to civil cannabis and cannabis offenses in general, and the prosecution, or actually, the, I guess, the laboratory research on evidence gained from potential suspected DUIs with cannabis drugs. We're, the state police, for some reason, is not taking those cases in their crime lab for processing, so we had to contract with a private entity for, for lab services there. This is a snapshot of that. So you see, we're on a little bit of a downward trend, somewhat associated with manpower, because again, not just calls for service from nine-one-one, also self-initiated activities. Here's a manpower overlook. We are authorized in 2017, forty sworn officers, seven full-time and five part-time, non-sworn, for a total of fifty-two. We hired three officers, one in January, one in June, and then one in October of last year, replacing a lot of organizational knowledge throughout the course of that year. We had, we were fairly stable in our non-sworn workforce, but with our part-timers, I think as I indicated in our mid-year report, that it's more difficult to keep them in place, either they're not terribly reliable on one hand, or B, they're so good that they're just gonna get scooped up by some other agency as full-time employees. For 2018, our hiring projection was, we were approved, budget-approved for the sworn officer for the narcotics investigation position. That was placed on hold based on the Sam's Club loss as a contingency. We were able to work out an agreement with the Kent County Sheriff's Department and Drug Enforcement Agency to include a task force officer to their heroin task force, which just recently started up. It was pretty fortuitous, actually. We're working on a part-time basis, two days a week right now, we've had some really good results with that so far, just in the short time we've been associated with that, so we're very pleased with that. Okay, here's your trend line in crashes, down to about a hundred crashes overall from 2016 to 2017. As you see, the injury accidents are up from sixty-four to one-ten. We're averaging about one fatal crash a year. We did have, I think, two in 2013, but on average, it's one a year. Last two years have been both on Randall Road, one at Main Street and the other one at Main Street. So that's an area of attention, which I'll indicate in a couple of seconds here. Okay, private property versus roadway, those are also down. The roadway crashes, obviously, are more significant to us, down from six-sixty-eight in 2016 to six-hundred this year. We're pleased with that, based on, we think that's partially based on our targeted enforcement. This is a slide I added last minute or late in the game here, just I, I thought this would be of interest, based on the topics of discussion tonight. If you'll notice, 2015, we had a pretty significant spike in those crashes. Pedestrians or pedal cyclists with a total of fifteen, up from nine the previous year and fourteen, and seven in 2013. But F, you know, and I think that was when we started adding the mid-block crossings, rapid flashing beacons, those type of pedestrian-friendly crosswalks. I think people were, you know, getting used to them throughout the community, but as time has worn on, 2016 and 2017, we've seen a, you know, a small, but a reduction nonetheless. So I think that's important to note. It also is important to note that I think that it needs to be emphasized that only one percent or less of our traffic crashes in the community involve pedal, pedal cyclists or pedestrians each year. I think this past year, it was about one-point-one percent. I know this isn't a great graphic, but this is the only way I can really get the entire community in the town. Those are our top ten crash locations, two on Kirk, two on Fabian, and essentially, the rest of them on Randall. Every intersection along Randall Road is a problem area for us. As a note, we spent a significant amount of time on Randall Road during the course of the year, because of, you know, the speed and volume of traffic and the amount of collisions we have out there, we've made almost two, nineteen-hundred traffic stops there during the course of FY 2017. It's a continued area of focus for us in 2018 as well. And then some in-progress, or works completed. We're completing a review of our policy manual, updating, we're hoping to have that done by the second quarter. Lot of mandatory state training, unfunded mandatory training mostly, crisis intervention training team, use of force, ethical policing, procedural justice, and we're hoping to have all those things complete and be compliant by the end of the year this year. Our MBC, the hard tablet conversion, I talked about the mid-year, we're in year, I believe, three of four, actually, I think that was, that's a, that's erroneous there. And then we extended our radar acquisition one more year, based on some budget constraints. Drug education training, we just recently conducted last week, we went, we were part of their administrative training of all the BHS students, so we had two officers speak about drug awareness, some personal experiences, and things of that nature. That was very well received by the, the school district and the high school specifically. We were halfway through our workplace violence and anti-intruder training. We've conducted that with the city officials here last year, or earlier this year, I should say, and then we're, we're working on that with the employee staff, so we have, hope to have everybody trained up fairly short order. Our CPR, AED recertifications are projected for the third quarter this year. Emergency vehicle operator, we're also doing that. We do that every year, either a four, a two-hour, a two-hour refresher. And then our rapid deployment joint training, which is our active shooter response training that we will conduct each year with our mutual aid agencies, Geneva, North Aurora, St. Charles, because those will be the likely first responders in an event like that. Completed tasks this year, our, we, we really kind of zeroed out our budget over the last few years, based on core services of, of these types of things. We've, I mean, I included a little bit this year in 2017, I'm sorry, in 2018, and we started doing that near the end of the year last year with some drug funds. So we've increased our stock of safety booklets and anti-drug awareness materials. Issued personal protection kits to each one of our officers. We're dealing with more significant and powerful drug items, paraphernalia, when we're out there in the field. So each officer was issued double-thickness latex gloves, P-100 masks, eyewear and sleeves for protection if they're dealing with those kinds of products in the field. Additionally, we increased some SOPs in relation to a buddy, a buddy concept for any time they are dealing with those types of items, in case they become subject to the drugs. Are conducted energy devices, we did train everybody on those this year, we field-deployed them, so we have a dozen Taser X-twos out there in the field, available to the officers who are carrying them currently right now in their patrol cars. We expanded recently our drug prescription collection program here in the front of the Police Department, not just to include Batavia citizens, but to anybody who has prescription drugs they may want to drop off, just trying to get more of this stuff off the street if we can. Indicated previously about the drug enforcement heroin task force officer on a part-time basis. I'd love to expand it at some point on a full-time basis if we could, but we are really getting great results on that. And then some certification training for sexual assault investigations as required by state. And that's it.
Good evening. I'm gonna be brief. You get a full report from me in about another month or so, but these are the highlights. In 2017, our EMS calls were just over twenty-five hundred, and our fire calls were around fifteen-hundred for a total of four thousand fourteen calls. In 2016, we had four thousand four, so just a, a scosh higher than 2016. In the past couple of years, we've been going up roughly about three or four percent every year, so this year, we kind of reached a little bit of a plateau. Our average response time is about four minutes and twenty-two seconds. We do a lot of cooperative aid with our neighboring departments, St. Charles, Geneva, North Aurora, Elburne. So the times that they've come to our department, a hundred and forty-nine times to help us, and we've gone to their other departments four-hundred-and-ninety-two times. Now that seems like an awful lot, that we're going to other departments, but three-hundred-and-forty-six of them are to Geneva. And the reason is, is because Geneva has one tri-city ambulance, and we have two, so we send them an ambulance an awful lot. So it's really not skewed all that much in that favor. Plan reviews, we did a hundred and one plan reviews. That includes everything from new buildings to refurbished buildings, to fire alarms and sprinkler systems. Public ed activities, two-hundred-and-forty-nine. We had some, some major losses this year, for a total of just under three million dollars worth of losses. Our four major losses are listed up there. Our biggest one was on Mill Street this year, that was a townhouse fire that extended into the two neighboring townhomes. Something, after looking through the numbers and everything like that, something that kind of jumped out to me, that I thought was kind of interesting. Vehicle extracations, we have more than twice as many vehicle extracations in Batavia than Geneva or St. Charles. We have twice as many as both of those towns. And I think it's due to the, what I call the high-speed corridors, the, on Kirk Road and on Randall Road, especially on Randall, where they have that curve down there, it really adds a lot of extra accidents in our town versus St. Charles and Geneva. And then lift assists, we had, in 2017, we had two, over two-hundred-and-thirty lift assists. St. Charles was the next highest one at a hundred and sixty, and all the rest of them were under a hundred. And I've, I've come to you before about lift assists and whether or not we should charge for them and stuff like that, and I thought it was an interesting number. We do an awful lot of lift assists at our, mostly at our retirement communities. 2018, a couple of things that we'll be doing in March, actually, next, in two weeks, we, ISO will be coming out to regrade the fire department. That takes into account all of our training, our manpower, our vehicles, our equipment. It also takes into account the water system in the Batavia, TRICOM, and, and our, how much we work with our neighboring departments. So right now, we're at an ISO Class II, with one being the highest that you can get in the county, or in the country. So we're hoping to at least maintain a two and maybe someday go up to a one. Grants, we have applied already for, for three grants through FEMA. We applied for a micro grant for a turnout gear for twenty-three thousand dollars. We applied for a, a vehicle grant. I apply for a vehicle grant every year. It, chances are good that we probably won't get it, but it doesn't mean I shouldn't ask for it every year. So that would be a four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar grant. And then we also are part of a regional grant with the, with Geneva and St. Charles to get Starcom radios, and that's about roughly two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. So, and then we, just last week, we also applied for one more grant, and that was through the State of Illinois for a small equipment grant, roughly about eighteen-thousand dollars for extrication equipment, but with their financial condition, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too much hope in that one either, so. But again, like I said, you know what, it's part of my job to make sure I ask all the time to try, see if we can get it. And then my fire marshal retired in January, and sometime in May, we're hoping to look to replace him. Thank you.
You hear from community development a lot, but I'll just go over some highlights of some of the things that we, we've done and are doing. In relation to strategic plan goals, one of the goals is to maintain and enhance the quality of housing stock in the city. We've reviewed and are continuing to review the possibility of expanding the rental housing program with the Police Department. We've kind of stalled on that a little bit with other priorities we've had, but we do plan on trying to pick that up still this, this year yet. We have also had some staffing delays because of that, too, so we'll be coming back at some point to talk about that in more detail. We've had a number of rehabilitation projects going on in the city, including some properties on South Harrison Street, as well as the old Blaine Street School, which is the rehab of, of that building into a duplex. We also had several infill lots throughout the city, including areas on Batavia Avenue, Alboraski Way, Maple Lane, First Street, and Latham Street. So we've seen a lot of little, little, single-family homes being built in different places. The other strategic plan goal is the addressing of the diversity of housing choices. Windmill Manor Senior Housing Development is under construction currently. That is on Hawks Drive in the northwest part of the city. That is a independent living facility for subsidized seniors. We're also now reviewing a project for, that's right across the street, for what's called, what will be called Windmill Landings, that's gonna be assisted living and independent living development for market-rate folks. The Campana Project was obviously a project that we had been working on throughout the year for mixed-use housing development, that has since been withdrawn. That took a lot of staff time, both inside during normal business hours, but also outside of business hours, which took, we estimated about forty-five hours, just in the public hearings and public meetings outside of normal business hours itself. So that took a substantial amount of staff time, obviously. City property at Wilson Street and Spiller is finishing up their final plot. We anticipate that's gonna be in front of Plan Commission at the end of this month, and then shortly after that, we'll be able to finally close on that property and sell that for six single-family homes. Those are smaller lots of about four thousand square feet in size, so they would be more of a modest rate home. City's also reviewing the revised plan for One Washington Place, obviously the downtown project, so we're working with them on some of the revisions to that. We also have, so that development provides a type of housing that's not available in the city right now. Also is supporting the private sector development, redevelopment of housing. We've been supportive of the employee-assisted housing in the past with Geneva, St. Charles, and North Aurora, with a seminar that we had regarding that. We've had private projects, again, with the Blaine Street School project and a duplex on First Street. City did award a TIFF grant to support a rehabilitation housing on South Harrison Street, which is the first grant we had in the TIFF for West Town area. And then we also supported the One Washington Place project, which is a Keystone project for downtown Batavia. TIFF funds are going to be going towards that project, which obviously pay for the city's parking garage, it'll be built as part of that project. Future and ongoing projects, building code amendments, we did adopt the 2015 Property Maintenance Code last year. We are finishing up the review of the local code amendments for the rest of the codes, and we anticipate that'll be coming to the City Council for review and decision in another few months. Certified Local Government Application, this is relating to historic preservation. We have worked on that application, we had to get some final details from some of the historic preservation members, we do have that now, so we anticipate we'll probably be making application for that in the next month. Land use planning, we have made amendments to the land use plan map in two areas, or that we're contemplating, in the Prairie Commons area east of Kirk Road, the areas particularly north of the Prairie Commons development, because we feel that with the, that development, we may have some different types of land uses that we anticipate happening in that area. Second is for the, the North Washington area, which we just discussed tonight, that is the, the, some of that changes in land use designation in that area. Others, we anticipate are doing the East Wilson Street, which would allow for some of the duplexes and such to be better fitting with the zoning classification they need to have in that area. And then some more areas in the West Town area, we're looking at maybe some additional zoning changes for that, that particular area as well. Zoning, zoning code, we do periodically review and make changes. We have text amendments that are coming all the time, we have another one that's gonna be in front of Plan Commission tomorrow night. So we do do that regularly, just to make sure that we're up to date with the, with the standards and things that are happening, or things that just don't make sense in this, in the zoning code that we have anymore, things that we need to have that tighten up or loosen up the regulations. And then planning for increased permit activity, we have been busier with more permits and more intense permits in some cases, because some of the commercial or industrial developments we've had, we've, we've had a lot more detail with some of those types of things. So we do anticipate we're gonna see continued development, activity with new developments, and that is also why we had asked for that additional staff person that we had to put on hold this year. 2017 accomplishments, completed the updates to zoning code and zoning map. We completed creation of TIFF number five for the One Washington project. We completed the acquisition of the Larson Becker property and demolition of the structures on the land. We created a temporary parking lot on that property, which is supplanting the loss of parking that we're gonna have in the One Washington project. We continue the review of the new building codes for adoption later this year. We also adopted the new massage bodywork regulations in conjunction with the Police Department and the licensing program. We're actually gonna be starting to relicence those folks at this point in the next couple of weeks. Completed inspection occupancy of the Suncast addition, new speculative building on Douglas Road, and the Duncan Road, and the Duncan Donuts drive-through on Batavia Avenue, among other projects. Historic Preservation Commission also reviewed, completed the review of their design guidelines, and will finish them for adoption in two thousand and eighteen. And in two thousand and nineteen, we will see continuing work on annexing uncorporated islands. That'll probably have some additional feedback from you later this year, actually, for, as the status of that particular one, and where we go with some of those. Review and process new development zoning applications in a timely manner. Pending the staff ability, we'll continue the significant downtown building inspections and rehab program. We take a little time to do that, just because we don't have enough staff to handle that right now. Review the comprehensive land use plan, make suggestions for revisions, and to propose amendments to the existing zoning map, to put properties in their local, into the more appropriate zoning classification, existing land uses, again, the West Town areas, one area in particular that we're looking at. And then one other thing that we didn't touch on here, that Howard did touch on, is the online permitting system that we're looking to start implementing this year for some basic permits, and then we'll expand that as we get comfortable with how the process works. So, that's all I have.
We had a good year. Okay. That's a little too short. But you can go through this and review it later. It's a little late now to be looking at numbers, but overall, the majority of our spending came in under budget for two thousand and seventeen. This is all funds and utilities showing by category, all of our spending of one hundred million dollars. This number here, commodity is large, is large because of our purchase power. Capital spending, we had eighteen point five million. Revenue sources, mostly coming from utility customers when you include all of our revenues, and then the rest is coming from some type of taxes or debt proceeds. General fund revenues by category, to show you from budget to actual, very close in every category. Spending, we came in under budget. We had budgeted to have about a two point eight million dollar deficit, and we'll end the year with about an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit. And this deficit is related to our economic development grant with Suncast. We have about two more years of that grant left, and then we won't have that issue as part of this. Electric utility, we had budgeted at a three million dollar deficit, and we ended the year with one point seven million to the good because of our purchase power contract. Water, we had capital projects that were delayed, so we came in with a surplus. And the wastewater treatment plant, we didn't spend quite as much as we had thought we would. This has been adjusted for debt proceeds, because debt proceeds are not recorded as revenue. We did have it budgeted, but for the analysis here, it's been removed. These are hard to read, but I know that you were interested in looking at these. These are pulled from the State of Illinois Comptroller's report to compare our general fund revenue per capita, expenditure per capita, to see how we compare to the Illinois average and to other communities in our area. We align very closely to the Village of Bloomingdale, down here in the corner, and our general fund revenue per capita was one million, I mean, one thousand, and so, pretty much identical and very close in population to Bloomingdale. And this is for our enterprise funds, which is electric, water, and sewer. It's very hard to find comparisons for those because of the electric utility, but its closest comparisons would be to Geneva and St. Charles, and we are pretty close to where they are. Our outstanding debt, we added to our outstanding debt with a debt issue at the end of the year of six million. And this here shows what year each of these debts will mature. This does not include the wastewater facility. The IEPA loans will not go on the books until we close out the project. And then I also pulled statistics for debt per capita. We are low right now, this is two thousand and sixteen, so it does not include our new bond issue, doesn't include the IEPA loans, and if the One Washington project moves forward, that would be another debt issue that would be added to this. But right now, we are one of the lower ones for debt per capita. And some of the strengths and challenges, we still have a good diverse tax rate base and good cash on hand in all of our funds. Development seems to be ongoing, some of our, and the low debt burden, and some of our challenges are aging infrastructure. We have a lot of capital spending planned over the next few years. And aging workforce, which Wendy had already mentioned, loss of some electric utility customers, loss of Sam's Club. We don't really know how that's going to play out yet. We just have to kind of wait and see how that goes. And then state, we don't know if they're going to be issuing a property tax freeze, and so, those are outside issues. And then software, we also have issues with older software. Our budget software is pretty bad. When we get new employees, they, they kind of laugh at it, but it works. So, it works, we can make it work, but it would be nice to have something a little more robust that, that could maybe do some dashboards or some other kind of reports for you. That's all I have.
All my slides are set up this way, but I just wanted to say at the front, I mean, they've all got two thousand and seventeen accomplishments and then items for eighteen. Verbally tonight, I'm just going to focus on the items for eighteen and trust that you can read the things. We've really talked about all the items from seventeen, but I'll go through division by division, hitting the highlights for two thousand and eighteen. So, administration, right now, we've gotten final plans in for the signage and lighting project on the north Batavia Dam, so that should be going forward this spring. Demolition of One Washington Place, also going forward this summer. The contractor has agreed to come back, so that's good news. He's going to finish underneath his existing contract. Then we're working on updated rate analysis for water, wastewater, and electric utilities. It's been three-plus years for all those, and so we'll be bringing that to you. And then, we just finished the Phase One remodeling plans for City Hall. Those basically are at staff review right now and then on hold pending whatever future direction is given for that project. We are going to be beginning the City Hall window and masonry project. Expect the delivery of the windows in mid-April, so we'll have a pre-construction meeting here in the next couple of weeks, and then begin construction really kind of when weather permits. So, hopefully by mid to late April, that project will get going. We are going to plan to upgrade the security system at Public Works. Ultimately, we're going to have systems throughout the city that are all consistent with the system that was installed here at City Hall. And then, for those of you who've been to our Public Works garage, you probably don't ever really have paid attention to the fact that there's trench grates throughout the garage, and over the years, those pipes have now basically corroded to the point where they're almost not functional. So, we need to tear up the slab and replace the piping in our floor for the drainage system, and that's a budgeted item for this year. Lots of capital improvements going on the electric side. We're already into, well into engineering for Paramount Substation and the main to Paramount Transmission Line. That will be coming to you in a couple of weeks with some options as to how that transmission line, routing options. Also fiber optic, we've had some opportunities open up on that, that we'll be bringing to you as well. AT&amp;T is going to be doing some work and offered to basically do joint trenches, if you will, with us, which will save some money on that project. Islands hasn't started yet. That might be one project that slides, given that our crews are still working in Colonial Village, but that is on our, on our list, so if that one gets going, it'll be later in the year. Obviously, we're going to be focused on Main Street for the reconstruction that's upcoming in two thousand and nineteen, and then on drainage replacements. Engineering, we've talked with you about these projects. Wilson and College Drainage, that's a smaller project that'll go later this year. We just opened bids for the Area Three and Ward One projects, so those will be coming to you for Ward. Those are on track and ready to move forward to construction. We're still working on the Prairie Street Phase One engineering. You just approved a supplement to that a few weeks ago. Main Deer Path, that's wrapping up engineering, and we're going to be starting the first year of contracts for Controlled Burns out in Braveburn Marsh. That's an ongoing thing for us now. Streets, some of the big items out of streets are all the new contracts. We're currently working with Geneva and St. Charles for solid waste, and that will also conclude, include a hazardous waste component. We need to do updated landscape maintenance and mosquito abatement contracts this year. The colibarium is going to be going in on the West Side Cemetery, so those are kind of the big, and then we've already, obviously, begun salt brine pretreatment. That's something that you've already all seen firsthand. Wastewater, wastewater treatment plant, obviously, some lift station improvements, SCADA upgrades, which is our computer system. Water and sewer, we're again, we're going to be coming to you very quickly with proposals for Wells Six and Eight for inspection and repair. We do have to replace the roof out at the water treatment plant. Both buildings were cedar shake roofs, as were required, and so we're going to be having to replace those. I don't know if we'll go with a natural cedar shake, or if we'll petition the homeowners' association out there to allow us to do some sort of synthetic treatment that may last a little longer. Area One and Ward Three, I'm sorry, the other way around. Area Three and Ward One water main replacements in conjunction with the drainage projects. Those are up and going and part of those projects as well. And that's everything for two thousand and eighteen.
Thanks, Gary. And batting cleanup.
I'll apologize in advance for a little bit of my nasalness with this cold, but I hope I don't sound too much like Bob Dylan. The communications plan this year is, I'll give a quick overview of some of the metrics that we did accomplish, especially related to some of the major methods, including the metrics on our social media where we've grown, you know, fifteen percent and really established a consistent voice and gotten around to generating content that was really designed to educate, inform, and engage our citizens. And our website, as Chris Aiston mentioned, we've really tried to turn it around to become a customer-facing voice in that particular area. And one of the most important things in communications plan for the past year has been establishing the partnerships with the respective organizations in town, ranging from the Chamber to Main Street, Park District, Library, School District, but also our internal partners with the Environmental Commission and Bicycle Commission to communicate the information about what's going on in the community. And, of course, some of this led to, you know, very significant events that raised the profile of Batavia, including our post-to-present activity that put us on TV, but I have to add a quick chuckle, too, that it's been an interesting year discussing and informing citizens on everything from salt brine to cormorants and pigs to W2s. So, it's been an interesting year. The primary objectives, you know, going forward here are to take this foundation that we've sort of built and start to leverage it out into, you know, really consistent and informative communication with everyone. The areas that we treat or address in communications are obviously listed here. You're talking about administration, community development. Each one of these has their own significant priorities. Again, we're talking about partnerships here in which we're trying to align city priorities with mutual benefits, and that objective would include everything from economic development and collaboration with Main Street and the Chamber, to, you know, our relationship with the school districts and park districts where our community initiatives align. We've also gone out and extended our reach into areas to heighten the tourism impact of the city of Batavia, present us as a viable community for parties that are interested in coming here to do business, but also our immediate partners at Fermi Lab, I've met with them, and look to build foundations where we could establish partnerships with them to bring their visitors and their tourism to our community, to use our restaurants and partner that way. The list that I provided you here are some of the major initiatives on the docket for the coming year, including a comprehensive community calendar that we'll be developing, that will be used by all these organizations prior mentioned. We're also looking into next year to plan a complete revision of the city website. There are both benefits to the way it's currently structured and also some limitations to what we're doing, and the staff is looking at opportunities that way. So, we've also added some measurement tools to provide even deeper metrics in the coming year. These include our meltwater media measurement that tells us the value and reach of our social media and our press outreach, and so, that's our objectives, to really align our key performance initiatives to these metrics into the coming year. Thank you.
And that concludes the presentations from the departments. What we plan to do in the future is, based upon the results of the strategic planning and the objectives that are sent there, to structure these presentations and so that they more directly align with those objectives that have been set for the immediate period. But this is just kind of giving you a flavor of that and also developing the habit and the cadence for having this type of feedback to you. Certainly, we welcome any comments that you might have about either the format of the presentation or any questions that you might have at this late hour. You probably don't want to go into questions about those presentations, but maybe we can take those in future meetings, or please forward them to me or any of the department heads, should you have any questions. And I believe the next item is projects, but I think you've, you've heard about a hundred updates on, on projects just now, so.
That was very good, very informative.
Great.
Anybody have any questions before we move on? Thanks, everybody. Okay, we'll move on then to others. Scott?
I just have a question regarding to the Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night. It caught my attention on the, the handout last night. There's a couple of things on there that grabbed my attention. One of them was the amendment to the Texas zoning code regarding the wireless communications facilities, and the other one was the multifamily residential districts in respect to kind of the tot lots. And it looked like, you know, those, you were moving up from that from a hundred to two hundred as far as residential units, and then the wireless communications facilities looked like you were trying, removing that from the residential zoning code. Is that correct, or the?
No, not exactly. I mean, the wireless communication amendments are to really address taller buildings where maybe a stealth installation could be, you know, installed on a, on a building like that. Honestly, it was one of the things that was brought up at the Campana Project, but we started thinking about other situations where it would make sense, like downtown, One Washington Project, Quarrystone here. You know, there may be some opportunity to put some of these smaller cell applications on these buildings, because these, these companies are getting smaller and they're putting them in more places. So, we wanted to look at creating a situation where maybe there's an opportunity to put these on some of these other buildings, but there would be stealth and you wouldn't really be able to see them at all. So, they'd either be incorporated into some decorative element, or they'd be hidden behind the parapet wall or anything like that. So, that was the intent behind that. The other, the other part was, I'm sorry, what was?
The tot lot?
Yeah, the tot lot. That kind of came out of One Washington also. We started looking at some of these variances and things, and essentially looking at, you know, certain projects, whether they should really have to have certain amenities or not, and we felt that, you know, one hundred units is pretty small, and from my experience at least, most of these developments really don't have amenities put in until they get two hundred units or more. So, we're trying to do it more aligned with what actually is happening with
So, we're trying to do it more aligned with what actually is happening with developments out there and just making it more reasonable. Obviously, there's going to be certain circumstances where maybe we're going to want them in other developments for one reason or another, and most of these are done as a planned development, so something, that's something we can incorporate as part of a project when we look at them.
I just, I just know that the wireless one, that was a hot button with Campana, not only with some people on the, on the council here, but with, there are a couple of people in the audience that really brought to bear some serious concerns, so I think that's going to be something to watch as we move forward.
Sure. Anybody else? How about a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, second vice of audio, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.